Sam, if you would check, the date for the Acoustic Grass Music Festival is May 11th through the 13th.
Okay.
I have a comment on page 17, soon as it comes up. Let's do it this way, it's quicker.
Oh, that's right.
Page 17. Okay, the, and it's a minor thing, too. Under heading 27A, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th paragraph, Commissioner Wickman said habitat fragmentation due to two roads. Commissioner Wickman, are you on?
Yes, I am.
What was the correction on that? I'm sorry.
That is habitat fragmentation due to two-track roads.
Two-track roads. I'm sorry, I forgot you were there. Do you have any corrections?
That's it.
That's it? Okay. We'll look for a motion.
Don't lose with those corrections.
Joni, was that a motion to approve by Commissioner Eastly?
Yes, with those corrections.
With those corrections, second by Commissioner Boraski. Any more comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Commissioner Wickman?
Aye.
Commissioner Eastly?
Yes.
Commissioner Boraski?
Aye.
Commissioner Hollis?
Aye.
I vote aye. Passes 5-0. We have no awards and presentation, first announcements first. Let's go with the furthest person away. Commissioner Wickman?
Actually, Dan, I think I will wait until I'm in a meeting.
Okay.
And then I'll bring the announcements back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Eastly?
I don't have anything, thank you, Dan.
Okay. Commissioner Hollis?
Yes, I'd just like to announce that we'll be doing a poker tournament for the Veterans Service Office this Sunday at, doors open at 12:00.
At the Nugget?
At the Nugget.
At the Nugget, okay, great. Commissioner Boraski, any announcements?
Yes, we'll be having our local community outreach meeting Wednesday, I believe, the 14th, is that correct, Tom? Yes. And invite everybody who is interested to come to that. And I guess I think that's all I have right at the moment.
Okay, great. I'll save mine for the Commission Management comments, because there's really no announcements for me. We're going to go to general public comments, three-minute limit per person, excuse me. Action will not be taken on the matters considered during this period until specifically included on an agenda as an action item. So we have general public comment here. Any in Tonopah? Any general public comment in Tonopah?
No, not a bit, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. We have two here, we'll start with Darrell Hall, Darrell Hill, and then Louis De Canio, Louis, if you'd come up and sit, be ready to go. Say and spell your last name, please.
Hill, H.I.L.L.
First. Okay.
Yes. I come here today, gentlemen, to find out from you gentlemen here to when Black Road will be serviced, opened up, or continued. I've been waiting for about a year to get this taken care of or get answers, and I can't seem to get any answers from anybody.
Okay, we've addressed this quite a bit. Is Dave Fanning available?
Dan, he's up here in Tonopah, and he's approaching the mic.
Okay, great. We'll let our Public Works Director lay this out for you.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, David Fanning, Nye County Public Works.
Speak up a little for us, Dave.
Dave Fanning.
Got it.
Director of Nye County Public Works.
Perfect, great.
To address the actual Black Road issue, we are going out to bid on March the 14th for this item, and we are actually going through the process as we speak. So, once the 14th comes in, we're going to actually have a meeting right there at the Chambers in Perump, as actually spoke about at the last board meeting, at 10:00 a.m. on March the 14th. If you want to attend, you can be a part of the pre-bid for that Black Road.
Great.
All right, thank you, Dave.
Okay. Also, I would like to say to you gentlemen that a couple of months ago, I had a meeting with Governor Sandoval on economic development, and I was included in that packet to be surveyed as a businessman for Perump. And there is a lot of things that I put on the table for Governor Sandoval, and he agreed with a lot of things, but we need to have some, someone that handles economic development that the governor can talk to. Is there any way we can appoint somebody? Because I know the person that was in that position is now getting ready to leave, and I've been doing this on my own as a businessman to try to bring jobs here to Perump.
Yes, Commissioner Eastly, was that you?
Yeah, Mr. Hill, have you addressed the Perump Town Board? That, Mr.,
Balakui?
I had a brain cramp. Balakui, Mr. Balakui is their employee.
Okay.
I would address the Perump Town Board on that issue.
Okay, great. Okay, then I'll do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Louis De Canio.
Yes, my name's Louis De Canio, it's D.E. capital C.A.N.I.O., and I've been a Perump resident for approximately nine years. My comment today concerns the reconstruction of Black Road also, which has been closed for more than 14 months as of today's date. Now, Black Road is a major north-south thoroughfare through the entire town of Perump. Many residents have been greatly inconvenienced, including school buses, emergency services, and various deliveries. Local businesses along or near Black Road have been hit very hard in the pocketbook, and many are struggling to survive financially due to the excessive delay in the road repair. And I'm not blaming the Nye County Commissioners for the road collapsing, but I am wondering what has taken so long to fix Black Road and who's going to pay for it. I used to be an A-Car journeyman electrician, Local 134 out of Chicago, and I have experience with building concrete pads which supported electrical switchgear. During the building of a pad, an inspector was checking every aspect, including the depth, the compaction, amount and positioning of the rebar, and the depth and mixture of the concrete. Also, the pad was also above ground level to prevent flooding and shorting out of the equipment. The lift station on Black Road between Stagecoach Road and Pex Stein Road is below street level, which makes it prone to flooding, and that's why it has previously failed and collapsed. If this basic principle was overlooked by the general contractor and the inspectors, I can't even imagine what was overlooked when it came to Black Road itself. To sum things up, the inspectors should all be fired, because it's apparent they are not qualified to do their job. And the general contractor is responsible for any and all repairs, and if the general contractor has a problem with any of his subcontractors, that's his problem, not the county's. And finally, what's taken so long to start the repairs on Black Road? Is the taxpayer getting stuck with this repair bill? And why hasn't anyone been held accountable for the collapse of Black Road and the negative impact which many local residents and businesses are currently suffering? Can the Board of County Commissioners please give the town of Perump an answer to these questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De Canio. This issue's been talked about in many open meetings, we've done everything we can to move this forward, and that's really all I can say at this point. Yeah, I can direct you to all the Granicus tapes, you can see how many times we've discussed it, what we've done to move forward. We've moved it forward as quickly as we can, I believe. Thank you.
But there's never been an answer, Commissioner, there's never been an answer.
Everything I can tell you, I can refer you back to what we've already said. Go ahead, Commissioner Hollis.
Your answer is that this board allocated $4 million for the repair and destruction of Black Road. $4 million. You will have a pre-bid on March 14th. That means somebody's going to be giving a bid to construct the road.
Is a taxpayer paying for this?
Right now, yes.
Why?
We're going to be in litigation, too. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Commissioner Hollis.
We're in litigation, I mean, the contractor, okay, the contractor that did the job is bankrupt. He's in bankruptcy. So, there's some legal questions here that I can't discuss without the district attorney giving me the authority to do that. So, we're doing everything that we can.
Black Road should have been fixed immediately and then to litigation.
Okay.
Mr. De Canio is not on the record, Dan.
Yeah, Mr. Canio, you weren't on the record. Thank you, yeah. So are we all. We're all very frustrated with that. All right, let's go to the 10:00 a.m. timed item for possible action discussion and deliberation to approve the audits of fiscal year 2010, 2011. Mr. MacArthur? Coming up?
He is.
Okay, thank you.
It's never, it's never good when your auditor, when your independent auditor approaches the microphone with a whole box of stuff.
Oh, no. I'm kind of glad I'm not there now.
Daniel MacArthur, independent auditor for Nye County. I'm here today to present the audit report for the year ending June 30th, 2011. I do have a big box.
We need to-
What's the procedure?
I believe we need to make a motion to accept this material. So, pleasure of the board.
I don't think you need to do that, Dan.
We don't?
It's, no, it's a, it's an agendized item.
All right, well, we have, we have three copies here, that, we're going to share two, put one out for the public, and anybody in the room who wants a copy afterwards can get one from Liz. So, go ahead then, please.
Okay. Appreciate the opportunity to be here with you, obviously, we're, this is information from several months ago. To begin with, I'd like to turn to page one of the bound audit report. I have several responsibilities to report on here today. Initially, I'd like to report on the auditor's report on the financial numbers themselves. I'll give you all a minute to get to page one. This page is titled Independent Auditor's Report. I'm sorry, there's, I apologize, there's two of them with that name. One is inside the bound copy, and that's the one I need you to turn to initially. One is a compliance letter and one is a financial letter.
Well, you should put, financial report one, financial report two.
I will, I'll, next time I should put Independent Auditor's Report and put compliance on there, so it's the differentiation. I apologize for the misunderstanding. On page one in the, in the audit report, and at the bottom of it, you'll see the one there, so you can differentiate between the two. This is the auditor's opinion concerning the financial statements themselves. The important paragraph here is the third paragraph, I'm just going to read the first sentence of this paragraph to you, so it gets in the record. It indicates that, "In my opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental funds, the business-type funds, or the business-type activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of Nye County, Nevada as of June 30th, 2011." Now, I'll just stop right there. Basically, what that means is the financial statement we are looking at is fairly presented in my opinion as an auditor. With that, I would like to turn to some pages inside the financial statement, discuss some of the specific financial items. Initially, if I could get you to turn to page 15 and 16 in the report, I'll give you a minute to get there. On page 15 and 16, it shows the revenues and expenditures of the major funds of the county, as well as, in the far right-hand side, you see a title at the top of the page, totals, and then one other one that says other governmental funds. Smaller funds that don't have significant revenues or meet some specific asset requirements are just deemed as other governmental funds, and in the body of this report, all these funds are detailed. Initially, what I would like to point out is, at the bottom of page 16, the bottom two numbers, right-hand corner, it shows at the end of the year, the fund balance of all of the combined funds of the county is $81,232,000. At the beginning of the year, it was $75,467,000. So, from last year to this year, if we were looking at the county as if it were a for-profit type business, there's an increase of $5,765,000 last year to this year. Now, I want to point out some specific things, because having said it like that, it would sound like that there was a strong profit for the year. In fact, a few things to point out, if you look on page 16, there is a column called Bond Proceeds, Capital Projects Fund, I'll give you a minute to get there. In this particular fund, during the year the county sold bonds, it sold bonds of $24,465,000. This money to be used for construction of the detention center. If you look at this during the year, the $24 million came in, and it shows expenditures for the year of $5,501,000. And so, at the end of the year, this fund, and this is as of, this would be starting year of '07, '01, 2011, it had an ending fund balance of $19,269,000. And so, when we see an increase in the fund balances of all the funds, the biggest reason for that increase is the bond proceeds that came in to construct this new facility. If you go to the left-hand side of the page, on page 15, just want to key on the general fund for just a moment. The general fund, you can see, has total revenues of the year of $35 million, expenses of $36 million. At that point, you have an excess deficiency of revenues over expenditures of a negative 1.1 million. There is budgeted transfers in and a small transfer out, so the net effect of the general fund for the year is this. You began the year with a fund balance of $327,000, very small amount compared to the operating expenditures here, and you end the year with a positive ending fund balance of $741,000. Now, the rule of thumb for budgetary purposes, you want that ending fund balance to be at least 4% of expenditures, and obviously, you're nowhere near that number. You're at a very low number there. I'd like to turn to page, back a page now, if you'd go with me.
Mr. MacArthur?
Yes.
Could you back up? Is that a good thing or a bad thing?
That, from a budgetary position, is a bad thing.
Thank you.
But not necessarily any different than a lot of our colleagues across the state.
Which is true.
Okay.
From my accounting perspective, we would like to see that number be a higher number, so that you have reserves to carry you from one year to the next, or one month to next, but you are in the same condition that the majority of entities are throughout the state.
All right, thank you.
It is higher than the budgeted ending fund balance, though.
That is correct.
Thank you.
And at least it's heading the right direction, up instead of down. There was a significant decrease of that fund balance over the last couple of years. Another issue I'd like to point out, so everyone clearly understands this, and maybe, I was going to take you to page 12 and 13 to explain this, but either, either page explains this, and I want to go to something that took place a year ago. A year ago, when this budget year started, there was a decision made by the board to borrow money to be used for retirement buyouts.
From the landfill fund?
An inter-fund loan. And when that took place, the requirements are that those inter-fund loans have to be approved by the Nevada Department of Taxation for them to be final. Ultimately, the Department of Taxation rejected that loan and said it was not authorized. And so, on the books and records that exist right now, that fund, that inter-fund loan has been removed off of the books because of a compliance problem. It was the intent of this board to have the general fund make payments back on that loan, and so, from a compliance point of view, because the loan isn't on the books, the ability continues to exist for the county to repay or make payments back to the funds from which that money came. That can be done by budgeting operating transfers on an annual basis, and I believe the intent was to pay back $750,000 a year.
Yeah.
So, in order to be completely in compliance here, what took place is that the loan was removed from the landfill fund, the money was removed from the special projects fund, and so, there would be a payment from the general fund to the special projects fund over the next five years to put money back into the special projects fund. There is not a formalized note that exists on the books, this would be done through a budgetary process. And so, just so everyone understands that that adjustment has been made because of the compliance issue, but you still have the option as a board to basically fulfill the substance of the transaction you wanted to take place.
Dan, let's talk a little bit about the mechanics of that inter-fund loan. It's no secret that we patterned our actions after that of the Carson City Board of Supervisors, who in fact had done the same thing. They, and we read it in the newspaper, and that's where we got the idea. And, and we did contact you prior to approving that inter-fund transfer. Did the, did our colleagues on the Carson City Board of Supervisors have the same result with that transfer from their landfill fund?
When this took place initially, I had concerns about this, and so, I did make some contacts with the Department of Taxation concerning what had taken place with Carson City, indicating my concerns is the ability to take money from the landfill fund and use it for these purposes. So, I inquired about why it was okay for Carson City to do it. And in the process, what I found was that the Carson City funds are set up different than the Nye County funds are, in that the landfill fund and the general operating fund of Carson City all coexist in the same fund. And so, they technically did not do an inter-fund loan, because all the money resided under one fund, so it was not the same as what existed for Nye County.
So, the newspaper only told half the story?
It only told half the story, I still question the ability. Not being their auditors or going deeper with what took place with Carson City, but one of, one of my concerns would still remain with what was in the paper is, is that if the landfill money resides in a general fund, that's still restricted money, and in my mind, wouldn't be available for appropriation like that. But not having seen their books and how that works, I would still have concerns with what we read in the paper.
Okay.
A point of interest, though, is that we did receive permission from our local representative at the Department of Taxation-
Yeah, we did.
-for this loan. We have that in writing.
Yes.
And then when the loan was submitted, it was rejected, as being operational.
And I, and I do want to get all that on the record, because I can see, I can see this body taking a lot of heat for that decision, when in fact, before this board approved that inter-fund loan, we did get permission from the Department of Taxation, and we did contact our independent auditor, both of whom said there, there isn't a problem with that. So, I'm not very happy that we get permission in writing, and, and then when we go through the audit process, it's rejected at the state level, so.
The initial approval and then subsequent?
And then the subsequent-
Reversal of that approval.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Any other questions in relation to how this has been handled, and understanding the ability to still make these transfers back?
Yes, no, I mean, no, I completely understand it, thank you.
Okay. All right. From there, I would like to take you to the general fund itself and look at a few items on the general fund. If you would turn to page 61 with me for just a moment. On page 61, I'll give you, if you're, all of you are there, I'll give you a minute, but on page 61, it shows the budgeted revenues, budgeted expenditures, and comparisons to prior, and comparison to prior year. Just a few things I want to point out to you, and I'll keep most of my comments just related to the general fund, is that obviously, the county has many, but this is the main operating fund of the county. Just some things to point out, under the expenditure category, I have to point out, there's three NRS violations that exist here of excess expenditures over budget.
Yeah, and they're jumping off the page at me.
Yeah. If you, if you look under general, under general government, under expenditures below that, you see judicial, budgeted $7,070,000, expenditures $7,131,000, it's over budget $61,000. The next line down, public safety, budgeted $15,139,000, expenditures $15,911,000, it is over budget $771,000. And then you see the welfare line item, and this is basically senior nutrition driven, or I should say, senior-driven, and the budget at $298 versus $305. So, a $7,000 negative variance there. These items, I'll touch on these again in a minute in the NRS compliance letter, but so you're aware, these do exist. When you make the comparisons, I'd like to point out at the top of the page, you see taxes, budgeted at $15,448, it came in at $15,939.
$959.
It came in, I'm sorry, $15,959. It came in higher than budget, $510,000. That's going to be due to receipts of delinquent taxes from prior years, okay? If you look over at page 62, top of the page, just so you can see this, and things I just want to point out, even though the, we came in higher than budget, please note that property taxes compared to the prior year have dropped by $400,000, a sign of the declining assessed valuations throughout the county. Just so you're aware of that, and also, some delinquent taxes could have an impact on that. And then you see the net proceeds pretty consistent from 2010 to 2011, that can be a very volatile number. The other thing I want to point out is, and we'll just stay on page 62, under the intergovernmental category, the fourth item down, it says consolidated tax, budgeted at $9,608,000. $11,26,000 is what actually came in, you look at the prior year, it's $9.7 million. To me, that's a reflection on an increasing sales tax figure. I'm sure there's some other taxes that obviously tied into that, but-
Increasing revenues from sales tax-
I'm sorry.
Because we did not increase the sales tax.
Right, increasing revenues from the sales tax because of the increasing sales, but even then, that is still lower than the high it's been several years ago, just so everybody's aware of that, okay? Just so I can point out some of those items, just one other item back on page 61, just so you can view the total expenditures. Just want to do some comparisons for you to see how you're tracking. In 2010, total expenditures in the general fund were $36,739,000. 2011, they're $36,180,000. So, there's a drop in expenses actually of almost, you know, around $600,000, or a little less than $600,000, just so everybody can see how that's tracking, okay?
Before we get off that page, I want to address Pam and, maybe Donell, but maybe Considering how some of these funds are significantly over-expended, I think that we need to redouble our efforts at asking for substantially more confirmation from department managers when they say that they are able to absorb an expense in their budget before we approve it.
Thank you, Joni.
Because we did that repeatedly over the last fiscal year, where we were assured if certain actions were approved by this board, that the negative impacts could be, financial impacts could be absorbed in the operating budget, and we have found that not to be true. And I understand that things happen, and this is not a criticism of any department manager or elected official. We should not lose sight of the fact that these violations are, they're not just, they're not just internal violations, it's a violation of the law to overspend your budget, and there are significant, Brian, would the right word be, criminal actions that this board could take against anyone who spends, overspends their budget. So, we need to remember that this five-member body is overseeing the care of the taxpayers' money, and we need to redouble our efforts to make sure that things like this don't happen in the future. This is not simply overspending, it's a criminal action. Sorry, Brian, you look like you were going to jump in there.
Well, no, I just, to correct you, this board really can't take any criminal action.
Okay.
It is a crime.
I guess that's what I meant, yeah.
But the one thing I did want to add, too, and I think maybe that Dan can help on this issue, is I know, one of the issues that came up, I mean, I think there's a lot of confusion over this, and this might help correct this problem in the future, from the standpoint of, I think people misunderstand the modified accrual system that public entities have to use, and I think that, you know, there's a lot of assumptions that ordering that's going on at the end of the fiscal year, they can pass off to the new fiscal year, when in fact, it does get charged back to the old fiscal year-
The old fiscal year, yeah.
-which creates this particular problem. And so, I think, I think what we need to do is somehow explain that to the managers of the budget, because I do think it very, you know, it does create this legal problem.
I think we do that every year, though, Brian. I think we do that every year though, Brian.
I know.
Where, where people hold invoices, departments hold invoices until the next fiscal year because they think that they can charge against the next fiscal year, but that's not.
Yeah, the reality is you receive the item before.
Right.
Problem is that the purchase is not being encumbered.
Oh, okay.
It is not being encumbered before it is made. And the orders are being placed without budget approval, without going through the purchasing system, and then they're coming back in to try to recover them for payment.
Yeah.
And there is no budget because they weren't encumbered.
But, but that certainly wouldn't tell the whole story for a three-quarter of a million dollar over expenditure. But gasoline expenses, fuel expenses are higher. You can't refuse a call for service, you know, if there's an emergency, so we've got to send people out, so I'm sure that overtime plays a role in that. All I'm saying is that this board needs to develop through you, Pam, some kind of a policy and a procedure to ensure that when someone tells us that an expenditure can be absorbed in their current budget, that they can prove that.
Absolutely.
Take care of that, would you?
Thank you, Joanie, because I believe I pointed that out in just one of the last couple of meetings.
Go ahead, Dan.
I want to pick up on what's just been said about the modified accrual basis of accounting. If you'd all turn to page sixty, and this happens in every single fund, not necessarily the general fund, but honestly, there were only two funds that had budget violations this year, was the general fund and Gab's Town Fund has a budget violation. But if you look at page sixty, you look under the liabilities and you see accounts payable, nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars. These are expenditures that were paid after the end of the year, but end up showing in this budget, I mean, in this audit report. Um, I've had many communications with various employees and department heads who have the belief that if they hold something off for payment until the following year, it's going to end up in their following year budget. That is, that, that happens continually and as, as many times as I have indicated, no, that's not the case. If you receive the good or service before June thirtieth, it will end up back in the prior budget year.
Yeah.
Which is the requirement of modified accrual accounting. And so obviously part of this problem is that nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, you can see last year that number was five hundred and eighty-six thousand. And it all gets back down to, as, as Pam indicated, uh, making sure people encumber their budget. One of the things that I do find, it's not necessarily a comment in my report, that many individuals will incur an expense and will not go in and encumber that budget item and then later come back in with that invoice because they are being locked out at, at times of, of doing that encumbrance. So there just needs to be some more emphasis on, on compliance there. What I'd like to do there is I would now like to go to the back of the report. I would like to go to pages, this starts on page two seventy, two seventy-one, I'd actually like to go to two seventy-two. I'm required as an auditor to make comments if I find issues in relation to financial operations that are conditions that would cause errors, that wouldn't be determined timely, or would impact the ability of the county to generate accurate financial information. I have, I have seven items here I'd like to go through and, and, um, some of these are very significant to me, so I'd like to go through each one of these. The first one, and I'm on page two seventy-two, says, uh, schedule of findings, financial statement findings, the first one, two thousand and eleven dash oh one, so this would be finding number one as it relates to accounting controls. Timely bank account and investment reconciliation to the general ledger. I'm going to read through all of this. All of you are aware that for me, bank reconciled accounts, or the bank was not reconciled and available to me to actually audit until the first week in January of two thousand and twelve. So that is basically six months after the end of the year. I view this as a, what's deemed a material internal control weakness, meaning that errors could take place, accountants use the word irregularities, which is basically misappropriation of assets. That could happen because this particular function isn't done on a timely basis.
Is this all departments where these, uh, funds are not being deposited on a daily basis or have you found that it happened in all departments or is it limited?
Well, this particular issue right here is completely treasurer's office driven, this particular issue. I have some other comments concerning other departments, but this one right here in particular is related to the treasurer's office. If the bank accounts aren't reconciled monthly to ensure that all transactions that occurred in the bank are on the books, the ability for county commissioners to look at the information and make decisions as far as budget decisions, uh, they can be impeded. You may be looking at inaccurate information. In the process that ties back to the bank reconciliation, investment reconciliation, there's a need to allocate interest or investment income to all of the different funds and entities that the county has accounting responsibility for on a timely basis. Now, at this point in time, um, interest allocations for four or five of the months hadn't been completed timely. I believe several months during the year weren't completed timely and that, that causes revenue not to hit the books so that, um, the entities truly know how much money they're receiving. And so those all tie together in with getting the bank reconciliations done. And so, uh, I'm very concerned about this issue. Uh, it, it causes the financial to be late. It creates the potential that errors could occur. Um, if there's any one issue that I want to hone in on in this audit, it's the ones, the first three or four here, but this is the most significant one because it flows through to everything else that takes place.
Yes, in fact, we, I had gotten a complaint several months ago from the town of Tonopah that their revenue or that their interest allocations were not being credited to them and have not for more than five months. So that might be the same five-month period that you're talking about. And then in fact, uh, the Round Mountain Town Manager at the same meeting did complain about the same thing, that they were not receiving their interest allocations either.
And, and the issue being making sure those things are done timely so you can make timely decisions as to where you are financially.
Yeah.
Now, I, I've made some recommendations in here and, and concerning this issue. I have discussed this with county management so that they can implement these, but one of the issues that exists is to ensure that the bank account is reconciled and prior to a month-end close, that bank reconciliation agrees to the books. And so I have put in my recommendations here that the county treasurer's office and the county comptroller's office review and agree what those amounts are prior to the end of a, a month's close. At that point in time, then you're going to know that everything for that particular month is on the books, it ties back to the reconciliation so that a close doesn't take place prior to reconciliation done, being done, okay? From, from my perspective, that is, that is, this is a very important issue that needs to be addressed.
So Dan, this didn't just show up in your management report, which are suggestions for improvement. Your exact words, and I wrote them down, were you consider this a material internal control problem?
Correct.
Okay. Um, I have a, Commissioner Shinhoffen, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Can I go ahead, since Dan is here, can I ask him a couple of questions?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Dan, um, talking about these reconciliations, I had, had brought several issues of concern about the treasurer's reports or actually the lack of a monthly report that we were getting from the treasurer to the board's attention. And we took some action that, that I'm not going to discuss in this meeting, but, uh, two questions that I have for you. There's a statement now at the, at the bottom of the treasurer's report. The statement says that the reports are unaudited and subject to change. To the extent information provided by third parties cannot be verified, therefore this report is subject to audit. I was curious about that. I, I have no idea what that means and I was, I, I'd like to know, when you do the independent audits for other counties, what shows up on their reports? How do other counties handle the dissemination of monthly information from the treasurer?
Um, I audit two other counties besides Nye County. Uh, one of the reports comes into the county commission and, and that particular treasurer certifies the numbers and basically there's a certification on the report that indicates that I certify these numbers to be true and correct to the best of my knowledge. And that report gets submitted to, um, the county commissioners each month. Uh, the other counties that I audit, um, there isn't a certification, there are no notices or any, any words on the actual report. That particular treasurer goes into the county commission meeting and discusses the report with the commissioners and answers any questions and discusses it in detail. So the other counties that I audit don't have a disclaimer similar to the one you're reading to me.
What do you think that disclaimer means? To the extent information provided by third parties? I can't imagine what information is provided by third parties that would be showing up on an internal report from an elected official.
I, I, I don't know who a third party would be.
Okay. Then my, my last question about the reports, I'm assuming that during, I'm not assuming, I know that during your audit process, um, you would have had an opportunity to look at those monthly reports because your concern was the same as this board's and that was that those reports were not being reconciled back to the, to the bank statement. Can you comment on the accuracy of the monthly reports themselves? Uh, as you know, that's what this board uses. I use them constantly to help me make spending decisions. I want to know what the balances are in each fund before I make a decision to cast a vote in support of spending any money. Are the reports accurate?
Um, the reports that were, the reports that the commission received in January, the actual bank reconciliations, um, I felt they were accurate. There were some reconciling items on there that I made adjustments for in the audit. The reports that you received prior to that, I did look at those and I found errors on those reports. One of the reports, and mostly I looked through the, through June thirtieth. I know the June thirtieth report, um, had outstanding check number that was different than the actual outstanding checks by about six hundred thousand. Um, also on the initial report received by the commission, there's a listing of the various bank balances. Uh, the county has money in, in several investment vehicles and money, money with banks. And, um, one of the particular accounts, the amount shown on the initial report, there was about a one million dollar difference from what was on the report you initially received showing, uh, money in the bank versus what the actual money in the bank was. Then there's another entry on the report called unallocated funds and.
Yes, in fact, we were concerned about the high, um, dollar amount of unallocated funds for several months.
The unallocated funds number, um, for lack of a better word, that appears to be a balancing number. Uh, that would be on the report for June thirtieth, would be a balancing number to maybe the account for the five or six hundred thousand dollar difference in the outstanding checks actual versus what was on the initial report. Uh, some of the unallocated funds of the four million dollars would be some of the interest that hadn't been allocated for the four or five months of the year would be included in that. And then other various reconciling items. Um, I could not tie the, the unallocated number on the initial report you received back to any particular number. I'm, I, I, I'm unsure about that.
Okay.
To answer that question. So, um, basically three issues. The, the outstanding checklist didn't tie, uh, one of the investments account didn't tie by a million dollars, and then I could not tie the allocated balance down to the penny or to backup document.
Okay, so we need to remind ourselves that this, that this audit only covers the last fiscal year, which ended June thirtieth. You in fact won't begin another audit until the end of this fiscal year, so we don't really know what's going to show up after June thirtieth. Is that correct?
Um, I won't know until after June thirtieth when I perform my audit.
That's my point. Okay, thank you. Go, go ahead.
Which, which, you know, if I go back to my first comment here, the timely reconciliation of the bank account, having the controls in place with the county treasurer, county comptroller agreeing on the numbers prior to closing the books, so that when you look at what, what, what you're seeing in each one of the funds, it'll be accurate, timely information for you. Let me go on to the next comment. This has to do with capital assets. This comment has been in here in the past. To me, this is also a material weakness in relation to controls over assets. The county has a requirement to at least every two years have the capital assets inventoried. That hasn't taken place. The asset listing is not current. That needs to be brought up to date. There needs to be a review on a regular, ongoing basis of asset additions and asset retirements. There's been attempts over the years to start this process. It's been started and then it, it's fallen through the cracks again. I deem this a material weakness because of the dollar amount of the capital assets involved that the county owns. So obviously that is a significant issue that needs to be addressed.
Is that a GASB issue?
It's, it's both an NRS and a GASB issue, both.
Okay.
Mr. MacArthur?
Yes.
Um, how much more ground do we have to cover yet?
A lot. A lot.
I've probably got, I'd say at least twenty minutes.
Okay. Um, can we take a five-minute break? Commissioner Hollis has left the room. We'll take a five-minute break. We'll be right back to finish this up.
Selection correct that you tell us this every year?
It is correct.
Thank you. Go ahead.
It's correct. Um, I, I see this as an important issue to ensure that assets aren't walking out the door, they're getting on the projects they belong on, uh, to ensure the books and records you're looking at are accurate.
So this is also what you would consider a material internal control problem?
And it is labeled as one in my report, yes.
Thank you. And Pam, does our new system allow us to finally correct this so, so that this will not show up on next year's report?
We had started to implement this in HDP and determined that it would be better to try, than trying to transition it into Tyler to set it up originally in Tyler, and that is our intent.
But Tyler will allow us to do this?
It, it has to, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next finding, finding number four, lack of ability to independently prepare financial statements and like the footnote disclosures. Um, this comment is one I'll just briefly touch on. This comment exists in every audit that I do. This basically is a comment that came on board a couple of years ago based on some opinions of CPAs out of the AI CPA where they believe that all local governments should be preparing their own financial. And then I look at the financial, in most cases, if you look at county response down here, it says the county believes that the benefit would be outweighed by the cost of training their accounting personnel to prepare the financial statements. In other words, rather than the county hire, hire someone and constantly train them to be able to prepare this, it's more cost effective just to have the auditor prepare it and then the county take responsibility for the financial statement itself is what this is.
So then you still consider this a material internal control problem?
Well, okay.
Yeah, I, I just want to know, the, the schedule of findings, everything on he, in the schedule of findings is considered a material internal control problem, correct?
There are, there are two that aren't and those are the last two.
Okay.
Okay, but all the rest of them are deemed a material.
Okay.
Okay? All right, then let me go to number five, general ledger adjustments. And I'm going to get into real some accounting talk here and so I'll try to make this brief. Inside of a set of books, in addition to having checks written and receipts issued, the ability exists to make entries to correct errors that may have occurred or move expenses from one fund to another, to record electronic funds transfers. While I was doing the audit, I noticed errors in adjustments that had been made. The ability, um, to control those adjustments, I believe is important and I've got a recommendation in here, I have reviewed this with management, to tighten up the controls over these adjustments. Just as one example, um, an adjustment can be made that shows you to move the money from one account to another account. One of the entries we saw moved the, the money from one account back to the same account. So the entry was actually nullified and so the intended entry didn't take place. And so I'm suggesting some controls here to improve general ledger adjustments. The next item, revenue apportionments. This is basically a control item concerning receipts written out of the treasurer's office. Uh, what I would like to take place here is to have a second person look over these receipts to ensure that the mistakes aren't made. Control procedures always have one person checking on another one. And right now, I don't feel like the controls are adequate to ensure that the receipts in the treasurer's office are being monitored. And here I am saying that the comptroller's office should, in essence, audit those receipts to ensure their accuracy. Now, um, that particular item, I don't deem a material weakness, I deem it a significant deficiency. It's one level down from a material weakness in account. It's one level down from a material weakness in accounting ease. The reason I don't deem it a material weakness is because the county has budgets in place, and assuming the bank rec is being done timely, with the budgets in place and a comparison on a monthly basis of revenues to expenditures, if, I'm sorry, budgeted revenues against actual revenues, if there were, in fact, a large variance there, it's going to be noticed by the budget director of the county. And so, it's an issue I think needs to be addressed, but it's not a material item where it wouldn't be noted at some point. Okay? And that's why I stepped that one down. Then, the last one here, information technology, security. This has to do with security level access into the accounting systems of the county. I've had this in a few years ago. I'm just concerned that one person has the ability to decide the access levels of all the different employees in the county. I believe that needs to be adjusted and changed. I have suggested a three-member security team be set up, who have the responsibility of monitoring and approving security access to the system. But that can be done in various different ways. That's my suggestion on that particular issue.
Okay.
And it's just so that one person doesn't have complete control over that. Okay?
So, Dan, on, back on '06, the revenue?
Yes, '06.
Appportionment?
Yes.
Since revenue apportionment is part of the investment reconciliation process, or I think it's part of the reconciliation, investment reconciliation process, and that was a material internal control problem, you're saying that this is not an internal control, or a significant or material problem, because there are safeguards built into the process? Is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is, is that the county adopts a budget on an annual basis.
Yes.
The revenues that are supposed to come in, for instance, for consolidated tax, property tax, et cetera, that is a secondary control on revenue apportionment, so that when the budget director looks at those revenue numbers each month-
I got it.
If something's missing in consolidated tax, she will see it.
She's going to know. Yeah, okay, I got it.
And that's why I stepped it down. It's still, it's still a weakness, in my opinion, but not a material weakness.
All right.
Isn't this more of a check and balance?
It is. It's a check and balance issue, and the check and balance doesn't exist as I think it should.
Right, okay. Got it. Thank you.
All right. Okay, I just have a couple of other things I need to look at. I need you to go to the letters now that are not bound. Let's go to the letter that is the independent audit report that has no page number on the bottom of it. Maybe that's why I could add the page number and the non-page number version. Okay, this particular report, I'll give you just a minute to access it. This is a report that I have to issue concerning compliance with law and regulation. There are several pages to this, but I'm just going to go to, really, the page that lists any potential problems. So, if you have the letter, if you would turn to Appendix C, the last page of this I just want to make sure all of you have it. Do you have access to this in Prump?
Yes, we have it.
Yes, we have.
Okay. On Appendix C, there is a listing of items that relate to compliance with law and regulation. Now, some of these things are going to be a little bit redundant, as to the material weakness items that I have noted, but I'll briefly go through these. Number one, monthly statement of cash balances. This is the NRS requirement that the treasurer's office submit to the county commissioners, a monthly report concerning the cash balances, money on deposit, outstanding checks, and cash on hand. And my comment is, this statement was not submitted timely to the county commissioners for certain of the month.
I want to expand on that a little bit. This language, you took pretty much right out of the NRS.
That is correct.
When you looked at those reports, was it your opinion that they met the minimum requirements of the Nevada revised statute?
Well, for me, I would like, okay.
Well, the only reason I'm asking, I'm not trying to set you up or anybody else, it truly is a legitimate question, because the reports that we got in the past were multi-page reports that gave information on investments, outstanding checks, you know, they were pretty lengthy. And what we're getting right now is actually a snapshot of when they closed the books for the month, of what was in individual funds.
My preference would be to see the detail as you've seen in the past.
Okay.
Whether the current reports actually meet the letter, I'll use the term "letter of the law" here, okay? You know, the way, and I have written, this is pretty much verbatim out of the statute, it says, "The money on deposit, outstanding checks, and cash on hand." Now, the summary reports are giving you summary totals for each one of the accounts. It doesn't necessarily give you a list of what the outstanding checks are, it gives you what a total. I believe in the past, you actually had the ability to actually see the listing of the outstanding checks. Probably from the point, and maybe I'm, maybe this is a, well, I won't on it off, I'm the district attorney, but-
It looks like he's getting ready to comment.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I do have a question, Dan, from the standpoint of what NRS 354280 says. Because I think one word that you don't include in here, which is troubling to me, is it says that the treasurer must keep a complete record-
Complete, right.
And I think to leave out, you know, or to read it, and what I think has been the issue raised, with the fact that there's such a significant amount of unapportioned funds in each of these monthly reports, the statute says you must keep a complete record of all apportionments to and balances in all funds. And, you know, so, from my standpoint, I think it is important to know whether or not, with having the significant level of unallocated or unapportioned funds, if we can really call this a complete record of the apportionments to and the balances in those monthly funds.
He said it way, that's what I meant. Thank you, Brian.
He said it very well.
What he said, yeah.
What he said.
Okay.
And my preference is, obviously, the detail you were receiving prior to these summary reports.
My preference is, obviously, to follow the law.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, we're good.
All right. Next item, expenditures in excess appropriations. I've pretty much already covered this with you inside the financial statement itself. There's one other fund, the Gabbs Town Fund was overspent in the Public Works area by $9,700. This was in a salary line item, it has to do with a hire that I think took place in September of '09, if I remember right. Capital asset inventory, this is an NRS requirement to inventory the assets every two years. I've already dealt with that in the material internal control compliance issue. Audit of apportionments, this is also an NRS item, I've already dealt with this in my material internal control comments. And so, there's an accounting requirement, as well as there is an NRS requirement.
I want to expand on that. I have a question about that, and I know that's what the law says, but is it possible for the comptroller to do his or her job in terms of auditing the apportionments, if we're not getting the information on a timely basis, or as thorough as it needs to be provided from the treasurer's office? I know that, obviously, this is a compliance with law issue, but if we're not getting the information on the front end, so the comptroller can do that job?
To, in answer to that, to do a complete job, you would want the bank account reconciled, so that you would know you have all deposits that have gone to the bank properly received in apportioning. So, to answer that question-
And we know that hasn't been happening.
You can do a partial test of the apportionments, you can't test all of it without having that process complete. So, in order of, in order of sequence, you need the bank recs done first, and you can do the apportionments after that, after the fact.
Okay.
Am I answering your question?
Uh, yeah.
I think, well-
More or less. More or less.
Yes, yes.
And two other questions related to that. This is the first time I've ever seen this on the audit report. And I don't recall, ever in the past, that Nye County's ever provided these comptroller reports. Have we ever done that in the past? First, and second, what about the other counties that you audit? Are they providing those reports in either written, or form, or some kind of a presentation to the Board of Commissioners?
Well, the NRS on here about that report on fund condition, the other counties that I audit, the answer to that until this year was no.
Okay.
They haven't brought those into any of their meetings. Basically, my discussions with them has been, look, in order for us to report on the status of the funds, we utilize information that we prepare and work on with the county treasurer's office. Once the bank rec's done, then we can report on that status, and because the reports are similar, then they have relied on-
Those reports.
The initial report, and then have commented on that report, and so, they haven't walked into the meetings and said, "Here's our report." And so, the answer is no, that has not existed in the other two counties I audit.
Okay.
To answer that question, no, it hasn't.
But, and you, I think you sufficiently answered my first question, which was, if the reconciliations aren't being done in the first place, how can anybody in the comptroller's office follow through with what they're supposed to do, with the information that they're supposed to provide?
Well, the comptroller's ability to walk in here and give you a status report on what the status of the funds are, if the counts aren't reconciled, then the comment would most likely be, you know, "Here's where we are today, but we can't tell you if this is correct or not, because we haven't reconciled the funds."
That's my point. That's my point.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, now, let me go to what's called the management comments, and I want to go to page six on this, and then I'll conclude my comments here. Management comments are items that are not deemed material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, just areas in which you can improve operations. I just have three items here, they're short items. At the bottom of page six, I'll give you a minute to get to that page.
Oh, sorry, Dan, you're not on, which one are you on?
I'm on what's called management comments.
Yes, but this one, okay. These aren't numbered.
I'm sorry, the page numbers are at the top of the page on this one.
Oh, they are, top left.
I'm consistently inconsistent with my page numbering, it appears.
All right.
I have all these comments in here, some of them are follow-up from prior year, but I just want to deal with the current year comments. Three items here, timely deposits, when testing cash, you know, that some of the deposits are not made to the bank on a daily basis, I just think it's good accounting practice to, where possible, make deposits daily. I realize in some locations, that isn't possible because of maybe a rural location, but wherever a bank is available, I believe deposits should be made on a daily basis, and this is a routine internal accounting control step, to make sure deposits get in the bank daily.
I think it's a critical internal control process to deposit money in the bank every day.
And I agree with you.
There are, and I know what you're saying, there are rural places, but in terms of the county doing business, we have two places we do business, Prump and Tonopah, and there are banks in both of those communities. Deposits should be done every day.
I guess there's the bank in Beatty, too. It's still-
And there's a bank in Beatty, too.
Some, you know, maybe a rural location like maybe Gabbs, or maybe Round Mountain, I wouldn't anticipate a deposit need to be made there every day.
I'm only talking about-
Where the banks are.
Where the banks are.
Okay. So, that's a comment, we'll require a follow-up in the next year to ensure that's applied, or if it isn't, why. The next one, barcode scanner-
I think the county should be following up on that, Pam.
I think there's, I think we've discussed, not only the ability to do scanning internally directly to the bank, you can now go to ATMs and scan in your deposits, and I believe we have the same ability, and we just need to get that functionally working.
The whole other issue here-
I also believe Tyler has that cash sharing capability, too.
And I do understand the internal control you mentioned, you know, you want to avoid things like embezzlement. My whole thing is, if we're not depositing money, it's not getting booked, and if it isn't getting booked, it can't be spent. And that's why we need to get money in the bank. We're not flush with revenue.
See, and I see your point, I'm looking at it from the internal control point. I also look at it from the point of view, if they're not made timely, you may have, you may have a greater propensity to having checks bounce.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right, the next item I have on here relates to barcode scanner. This is something that I've discussed with, actually, the treasurer's office. I'm suggesting that scanners be used, and that tax notices go out with barcodes on them, so that when the money comes in, it can just be recorded in a quicker fashion, because there's so many parcels, and apportionments have to take place, I think this would help operations.
Okay.
Okay? And the last one on here, inventory control. There are supplies inventories that the county utilizes, but these are basically controlled inside the county general fund. During this last year, I noted that the inventory control accounts and the ledgers just continued to climb as items were purchased, but as they were consumed or used, that particular part of the transaction was not shown, which indicates to me that controls over inventory need to be followed up on and improved. This hasn't been a problem until this last year, okay?
And again, that's partially a GASB issue, yes.
Correct. Okay.
All right.
I'll tell you what, in the interest of time, I'll just terminate my comments at that point, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. MacArthur. To the board, any questions, or do we have a motion?
I think I talked enough.
Okay. Is there a motion? Do we have to accept this?
I, yeah, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to accept and approve the audit from Dan MacArthur.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Easley, a second by Commissioner Baraski. All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Wickman?
Aye.
Commissioner Easley?
Yes.
Yes, it's five-nothing vote, it's five-nothing.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. And I know this, and thank you, Dan, sorry to rush you along. We got people in Tonopah, we have people down here. I don't know how we're going to do it, but we will try. We're going to open-
Commissioner Shinoffen?
Yes.
This is Brian.
Yes.
I noticed on the last vote, since this is a teleconference, I think we need to be careful, that I could not hear-
Okay.
Commissioner Hollis, or-
Aye.
Commissioner Baraski.
And I think they need to make sure their mic is on when they're voting, so that we make sure we get it.
My mic is on.
Aye.
Yeah, okay, we'll make sure to do a voice, a voice.
Thank you.
Thank you, good point.
Commissioner Shinoffen, may I say something?
Yes, please. Go ahead.
Before you get started on the next agenda item, I anticipate that I'm going to have to slip away, probably in the middle of that testimony, and I really apologize to everybody, but I do have another appointment at the Cannon Building, I have to be-
No problem.
There, okay?
Okay. I was hoping to go to the 10:45 item. Commissioner Hollis also told me that he has to leave at 2:00. He has an item he wants to get to, we'll get to that right after lunch, probably, the item that he is concerned with, which is NWRPO. I would like to try to get to the 10:45, if, and actually, that's where we're going. For possible action, we're going to open a public hearing, and this is a discussion and deliberation to adopt, amend, and adopt, or reject Nye County Bill 201202, a bill proposing to amend Chapter 8.04 of the Nye County Code relating to fireworks. So, we're going to open the public hearing first, I believe. Anybody wishing to comment? I have some forms here, and then we don't really need forms, you can come down. If you agree with somebody that's already spoken, Commander Beck, or Captain Beck, if you would come down, if you agree with somebody's already spoken, please don't reiterate it. I mean, if you really want to, go ahead, because that's your right. But just say, "I agree." Thank you. And, Mr. Waters, I have you, if you'd come up.
Yes, that was only if nobody else spoke.
Oh, okay, that's what it says. Well, we'll start with Commander, Captain Beck. Anybody else, come, have a seat, and as they're open, please fill in. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, this is a letter from the sheriff. He apologized, he committed in person, presented his objection to changes in ordinance that will allow residents of Nye County to purchase and use fireworks within the county. He's presently out of state, representing, and at law enforcement, the FBI, CEDIS work group. In wake of the recent history of Reno's fires, where people were killed and property destroyed, causing widespread destruction, an area that gets far more precipitation in Nye County, should be a warning. There is an effort to expose the citizens of Nye County to an increasing fire danger at a time when Prump Valley has a controlled burn moratorium, and at the height of fire season. Does not make sense. In 2004, 2005, a study was done as part of the Nevada Community Wildlife Risk Hazard Assessment Project, the Living with Fire Project, which is a collaborative effort involving many organizations, and is managed by the University of Nevada Cooperative Extension, University of Nevada conducted the study. The study assessed 250 Nevada communities located in the wildland urban interface in terms of their wildlife risk and hazard. The results of this analysis were presented on a by-county basis in report form. In Nye County, the following towns were assessed. In Nye County, the following towns were assessed: Amargosa Valley, Hadley, parenthetical Round Mountain, Beatty, Ione, Belmont, Manhattan, Carvers, Perump, Gabs, and Tonopah. Three of these towns were low community fire hazard risk. Four towns were moderate community fire hazard risk. One was high community fire hazard risk, and two were extreme community fire hazard risk. One town assessed at an extreme community risk was rated 97 out of a possible 100. In Section 13.1.7 Ignition Risk of the Perump Town Study, it states, "The fire history around Perump indicates a moderate potential for fire ignition within the community primarily from human risks." Possible ignition sources include campfires and arson. Fireworks have been identified as a particular concern in spite of county ordinance prohibiting them because of their availability in Perump at the height of fire season." There's a web address, www.rci-nv.com/report/nye section 13.html. Before the revision of this ordinance to allow fireworks to be used in Nye County, they were identified as significant concern for Perump Valley, which was the only town that allowed sales of fireworks in Nye County at the time of the study. Now, the B.O.C.C. is considering expanding the threat to other communities, even those of moderate, high, and extreme risk. I do not know if passing this ordinance will increase fire hazard insurance for property owners in the county of mostly dry brush in the height of fire season when a controlled burn moratorium is in effect. The county commissioner repeatedly expresses they are responsible for health, safety, and welfare of the county. This ordinance does not promote health, safety, or county welfare, allowing safe and sane-type firework usage in Nye County is not safe or sane. Respectfully submitting the services of citizens of Nye County, Anthony L. DeMayo, Sheriff.
Thank you, Captain Beck.
Could I...
Yeah.
Put my own personal opinion there?
Yeah, go ahead, put your own opinion.
Yes, and I have to mirror what Sheriff DeMayo says regarding, we have a community perump that says there will be a controlled burn moratorium, particularly during that time, and often BLM says all the state and public lands, there are no campfires on. And we're looking to pass a law that would say, well, no, you can. How are we going to argue that, or how are we going to stand in opposition to those moratoriums that BLM, Division of Wildlife, and Town of Perump particularly put on? So...
I'll give my opinions later.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Scott Lewis, Fire Chief. Actually, the sheriff and Captain Beck both did a great job, and they actually stole some of the information, not stole, but shared with you, the information I was willing to share as well. This town has been identified as that of a high fire hazard. We do certainly have our conditions, including the fuel load, the winds, and extreme temperatures, and low relative humidity add to serious fire conditions. Reno is a perfect example, the recent fires they've had there, including that being an accidental ignition from improperly discarded ashes, destroyed 26 homes, had a fatal fire, and numerous acres. So, there's many considerations for this. I also noted, when we're talking about this, the business aspect aside, I'm strictly here from a life-safety standpoint. And clearly, we would be held accountable and responsible for mitigating any emergencies that may stem from such use. And historically and statistically, it's from misuse of such materials, including the injuries, and the thresholds of those that are usually between 10 and 14 years of age.
Okay. If I could, you said this is a high area, I believe Captain Beck said this is moderate.
No.
So, which...
It's been deemed moderate to high, depending on the conditions, given years.
Oh, okay. All right.
Our fuel loads have a tendency to change, and the growth patterns of some of the indigenous weeds and such.
Well, we get a lot of rain, and then we get a lot of growth. I understand.
Absolutely. So, it's actually gauged on an annual basis.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you state your name for the record? We didn't get it, whoever just spoke.
It was Scott Lewis, Fire Chief.
Thank you.
Bill Kohbarger, K-O-H-B-A-R-G-E-R, for the record, Perump Town Manager. Life, safety, welfare of the citizens of the Town of Perump. When you have both the sheriff, Tony DeMayo, and Fire Chief Scott Lewis agreeing that this ordinance should not be approved, the Town of Perump strongly supports both of them, and we feel that this ordinance should definitely not be approved as written, allowing citizens to use fireworks in an extremely dry area, especially in June, July, and August. And we all know that it's a 90, 95% chance that if one of them goes off into the weeds, it will start a fire. It's just not a good thing. So, again, the Town of Perump strongly supports Chief Lewis's and Sheriff DeMayo's decisions to definitely not support this ordinance.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, Tim McCoy with Area 51 Fireworks.
Spell your last name, first and last name. I got last name, I'm sorry.
M-C-K-O-Y.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm opposed of the opening up the licensing and allowing tents and stands to set up throughout the county.
Miss, if I could just interrupt you for a second. There's nothing in this ordinance that would allow tents and stands to be set up. There's nothing in here that would allow it. You have to have, you have to have a license, you have to have insurance, you have to be in a zone, zoned, you have to be in a building. All of that still takes place. There's nothing currently...
There's nothing in there that says it has to be in a building.
Well, when you go to get your license, you're going to have to be somewhere. And I would be happy to add the language that you can't just bring in a truck and set up a booth and sell. That's, yeah, that's, and I believe I had, the DA, Tim Sutton, gave me that opinion on it, that there's nothing in there that would allow that, because you have to have those things. But go ahead.
Yeah, right now, the way it stands... Right now, the way it stands, I believe, if you're in the right zoning, commercial property, you could set up a tent or a stand, pay your $500, and you can be in the fireworks business.
Yeah, and I disagree with that, but, and that's not my intent. My intent is, anybody who wants to bring in a new business, I understand your disagreement on that. Do you have a disagreement on the use of fireworks as being inherently dangerous?
What I disagree with that is, you're allowing the safe and sane, and now you're putting the burden on the different towns and in fire chiefs and all that to determine what's safe and sane and what's not.
Actually, it's written in the code as to what's allowed. The new changes, I don't know if you've read the new changes, there's nothing aerial allowed.
Nothing aerial.
Nothing aerial. So, this is things that can be just on the ground, that you have control of. You have to have water or fire extinguisher within 50 feet of where you're shooting it off, and it has to be on your own property. And currently, you know, they're doing them out in the lake bed and everywhere else, they're hiding them because they are illegal. But I'm sorry, this is your comment, period, not mine. I apologize.
That's okay. I'm finished right now.
My name is Kelly Bernard. Sorry, my name is Kelly Bernard. I am actually pro-fireworks, but I am against B-E-R-N-A-R-D. I am against safe and sane fireworks in this area because of the fire potential. I have in the past done studies on, every year, on the amount of fires and deaths, and generally, the fires come from safe and sane fireworks because they are burning on the ground. And when you live in an area where there's so much dry brush, that it does create a big potential for fires in this area. And the only other thing I wanted to remark was, I think in what Tim was talking about is, in the wording on the agenda here, it says, "By removing the limitation on consumer firework display permits." I believe that's why we are all here, is that at this time, we have six permits that are allowed in Nye County to sell fireworks. And by the way, this says here, it sounds like you want to remove that and open it up to whoever wants to put a store here. And we are all against that.
Okay.
Because we've worked hard for supporting this community with our stores now.
I understand.
All right. Thank you.
Got more people coming forward, then we will get to Tonopah and your comments up there. Anybody else who'd like to speak after this gentleman, please come up and sit down, be ready to speak. Thank you.
Casey Steinhardt, representing...
Hit the button, and then spell your last name, too.
Casey Steinhardt, S-T-E-I-N-H-A-R-T, representing Phantom Fireworks. The ordinance, as it reads right now, has no provision to stop a tent or temporary location from setting up.
Dan, we can't, we cannot hear him, and we did not get his name.
Okay.
I'll try again. Casey Steinhardt with Phantom Fireworks.
Casey, could you spell your last name?
Yes. S-T-E-I-N-H-A-R-T.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The regulation is, we read, it does not put in any stipulation as to temporary locations, which means tents and stands. We did check with the city, we did check with the county, as far as if there's anything to prohibit the sale in those, and there's not. We obviously, as being here, are not in favor of expanding the number of licenses, but at the same time, if it is going to be expanded, we would like to make sure that ours, as well as everybody else's, dollars and cents that they put into their buildings and done everything, is that it's prohibited from being anywhere but in a freestanding building, and also that it goes along with NFPA 1124, which is the federal regulation that explicitly states how and where fireworks can be sold legally. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Brent Jones, Director of Emergency Services, J-O-N-E-S. Chief Lewis and Captain Beck bring very valid and true information to the table here that we have to agree with pertaining to life safety. The fuel danger throughout our county does vary from extremely high to moderate to low in some cases. It definitely does depend on the type of rainfall we experience. What's unfortunate is, you know, safe and sane fireworks, if used properly, are something that can be enjoyed by many people. And the people that violate the law and use the aerial fireworks are probably going to do them whether or not there's a law or not, and that's unfortunate. And that's the battle that we will continue to fight as public servants, protecting the health and safety of our community and visitors. So, it's kind of a catch-22, but we do want to look first and foremost to the safety and health of our public, and their structures that they have worked so hard to get. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, here we go, somebody else coming forward here in Perump.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Jeffrey Shaner, I'm an attorney, I represent Mr...
Get right in the mic, please.
Oh, there we go.
And then spell your last name. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Jeffrey Shaner, I'm an attorney that represents Ninja Fireworks, was owned by Anthony McCoy. McCoy name is, I think, well-known in this community...
Excuse me, Dan?
Yes.
I'm sorry. He needs to state his name for the record again and spell his last name, if he could.
Certainly. Jeffrey Shaner, S-H-A-N-E-R.
Thanks.
You're quite welcome. As I was pointing out, the McCoy name is well-known in this community with respect to the fireworks industry. Mr. McCoy Senior, who was passed away some years ago, was one of the initial developers of the industry in this community, and saw to it by his own efforts and that of his family, and not only that in terms of human effort, but actual valuable capital, investing into a business which was relatively highly regulated here. The effect of this ordinance is going to open up the possibility to a number of new operators coming in. And while certainly we understand the notion that it's good to have free enterprise, and it's good to have business, but this is a very regulated and controlled business. These people have put their efforts into it for 30 years, and now to open it up is going to dilute an extremely limited market. The economy of the community, the economy of the country at large, is already in enough trouble, and so, the consequence will be is that we're seeing a decline in the overall market. Increasing the number of operators is not going to increase the market. It's going to decrease the overall available market for the operators that have devoted so much of themselves to creating an industry here which pays sales taxes, creates literally hundreds of jobs, pays real estate taxes in the community, and is a very good participant in this community. If you open this up at $500 apiece to five, six, seven, eight, or more operators, you're going to dilute a market where it's going to ultimately destroy the market here. And that's not going to benefit either the community or these people who have invested so much of themselves into creating a business that was viable and stable in this town. So, to do otherwise is going to have an unfair effect on them, and certainly, an unsavory impact on the community, because you're not going to get more people buying fireworks, you're just going to have more people selling fireworks to a limited audience of participants. Your net result is, you're going to destroy the business. You're not going to make it a better business for anybody, and the net result will be a decline in revenues for the county and the community. I listened to the previous discussions by your auditor, and I've had the pleasure of serving as a public attorney for cities, and I've heard those discussions before by auditors. And it always sounds the same to me, is that you need money to operate your community, and these people pay into it. If you dilute it further, and they're paying in a significant license tax, and are willing to continue to do that. The consequence, and maybe this seems unkind, but the consequence is, is that they suffer, and no gain is, in turn, delivered to the community.
Yeah. Thank you. Just a minute, please. Brian?
Oh, I have one other matter.
Okay. I'm sorry. Let this gentleman finish, and then I have a question for Mr. Coonsy.
With respect to the, this ordinance, Mr. McCoy, in a few days, gathered something like 350 signatures of people who were opposed to it. They don't want to see more fireworks.
What are they opposed to? Are they opposed to...
They're opposed to the expansion of the license.
The expansion of license. They're not exposed to being able to use them. Is that, what was the petition?
The petition essentially dealt with the question of expanding license.
Expanding license, not whether they would use them or not.
Dan, Dan, we, let's just make this clear. It's not a license, it's a permit.
Thank you.
I stand corrected. It's a permit.
Okay. Thank you.
But these people, there's 354 people, this was gathered in three days. If you had three weeks, you'll have thousands of people. I recall reading in your local paper, when the last time this matter was before the commission, many people wrote in and said, "Don't expand the number of permits." And I will provide these to the clerk, and with copies to the commissioners.
Thank you. Mr. Coonsy?
Yes.
Is there anything in this that allows people to come in and set up booths? Is there anything in our code that allows anybody to drive a truck in here and begin to sell fireworks off the back of their truck?
Unfortunately, it's, that's not the right question, because the real, the answer is that the code does not require any specific condition to be awarded or permitted. The only thing the code does, it says that if you are going to sell fireworks, you have to have a permit.
Right.
But unfortunately, the code does not set any restrictions on location or the manner, other than the timeframe of when they can be sold. Those are the only restrictions in there. So, there would be no capabilities for the board to use an artificial standard to say that only people with a fixed location would be eligible for permit. If you want to do that, that would have to be added to the code.
And Brian, if I might add to that, there may be some strict, some restrictions that are provided for in the master plan in the Perump Regional Planning District. Just when they would present their plans to the Planning Commission, they may be subject to a conditional use permit, and the restrictions would be built into the CUP. But anything outside of Perump, they can sell them out of the back of their truck or in a tent.
I think the issue is in Perump in particular, and I guess I would think what it looks like in Las Vegas, because they have, you know, hordes of mobile stands that are put up, but they're also put up in commercial areas.
Right.
They're usually put up in parking lots of gas stations, and, you know, the Walmarts and things of that nature. and things of that nature, so, uh, there's not going to be any conditional use permits that's going to ban, um, those types of, of activities, but they say they would have to go through the permitting process, they would have to get a permit, but, but the simple answer is no, there is nothing in the code that would prevent temporary, um, locations or, uh, sales.
But, but here in Perump, they-
Mr. Chairman, hold on-
Hold on a minute, um, but here in Perump, they'd have to have a conditional use permit, and then they'd have to go through that process, and I understand that, thank you.
And Daryl Lacy wants to address the board.
I believe Commissioner Wickman was trying to get a word in.
Oh, I apologize, and, and you know what, the public hearing is still open, so maybe we ought to-
We ought to hold our comments?
We do have public comment here.
Yes, we'll hold our comments then, I guess.
Yes, sorry, Daryl.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
You can stay there.
I'd like to-
Yeah, so, Commissioner Wickman, go ahead.
We're under public comment, I would like to hear the public comment, we can address our questions later, thank you.
That's what I was trying to get back to you, thank you.
Well, I've been trying to get in, it's why I've for ten minutes.
Thank you, go ahead, sir.
David Bernard, B-E-R-N-A-R-D, uh, I'd like to, uh, say that to fix this problem, we've already got the solution, is limit the, the licenses, and also with lighting the product, have a safe place to do it, a shooter site, and charge admission to that where the county would make money, instead of, you know, anybody on any street could start a fire, especially with Safe and Sane. I used to do professionally, professional shows in the Bay Area, and they had specific parameters, and I think you should have those specific parameters with that, and knowing people, you know, uh, it is very unsafe.
Sir, we do have shooter sites already built into the, into, into the existing, uh, ordinance, there are, there is approval for this to go.
Right, uh, are you guys going to provide one here in Perump?
The towns, it was left to the towns, and none of the towns ever stepped up to do it.
Well, maybe that's a, a focus we should go for instead of what you're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do anything you want, if you've got enough money.
Go ahead, Ms. Orman.
Lori Orman with Phantom Fireworks, O-R-M-A-N. Um, what we were talking about earlier, I went to the planning department yesterday, there is nothing in the ordinance that prevents you, anybody, from coming in and opening up a tenderness stand. The only thing that there is, it must be zoned commercial, and you must have permission from the property owner, otherwise there's nothing in the ordinance or zoning that you cannot, that prevents you from doing that.
Yeah, and that wasn't my intent, and my intent was to stop that.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Dolan, resident town of Perump, D-O-L-A-N. I, I've just got a couple of things here, you just made mention about putting it onto the towns, so what you're basically saying is you want to change the ordinance and push off the sites to the town to construct and to oversee.
One has nothing to do with the other. The, the shooter sites were in place before, the towns have never stepped forward with it, that's why I thought it might be okay to let simple people use it.
But let's talk about, let's talk about the issue of the safety of the residents. Let's look at the rainfall that this camp, that this community in Southern I County has had the last couple of years. Every year it's been less and less. This winter, the snowpack in the mountains is extremely low. We are not going to be at a moderate fire burn, we're going to be at extremely high, and then you get the winds that come across from the south, from California, as in today. You get those coming up in June and July, as they do every year, and you could light three-quarters of this valley up. I don't think that's something that the residents want to put up with, let alone to be able to have to stress the, not only the Perump Valley Fire Department, but any other fi- Fire Department, BLM, or whoever, to come in and help assist. We're talking lots of dollars here, let's think sensibly, let's not try and burn down Southern I County.
Yeah, that was my intent, thank you. Um, let's go to Tonopah, public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, go ahead, will you please, state your name for the record, spell your last name.
Joe Elkins. Now it is, okay. Joe Elkins, E-L-K-I-N-S, General Manager, TNT Fireworks, from Las Vegas. Uh, one of the differences that observed in this discussion, uh, kind of a misquote, in Las Vegas, there is no license or permit issued to a independent person. All licenses or permits are through nonprofit groups that raise in excess of three million dollars for nonprofit groups in Clark County, which is a little different than saying that everybody that is anybody would run up and start selling fireworks. I think if you look at your opportunity to amend, I would certainly amend that the permit for Safe and Sane fireworks, and it's Safe and Sane only, be altered to allow only nonprofit groups, and only at approved commercial sites. This would, would bring money into the county, which hasn't been talked about, for, for nonprofit groups, and I haven't met one yet in the last three years that isn't in desperate need of additional funds. It has been run successfully in, in the Clark County area for somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-five years, uh, the fires, danger that you talk about, uh, you know, there isn't, matches are dangerous too. If you look at the incidence of fire, Safe and Sane caused fires in Las Vegas, you will see it's virtually nil. Uh, also, many of the items sold in Perump, uh, are illegal in Clark County, but seem to find their way there on a regular basis. I would be happy to answer questions if necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody next?
Um, do you have to be registered?
Oh, yeah, the, uh, the gentleman who first spoke said everything the second gentleman wanted to say, so he is yielding his time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can, anybody can get up and speak, anybody else in Tonopah?
No, that's it.
Nobody else, all right, we have one more who wishes to speak here in Perump.
My name for the record is Chelsea Yilk, Y-I-L-K. I'm with Blackjack Fireworks, um, I run, I am a administrator there. I agree with everything that Dan is trying to get past as far as, uh, I think that residents of Perump should be able to light off their own fireworks, um, within Safe and Sane limits, that they should be able to, um, use their own judgment to do so. Um, the town people are not dumb, they know that, you know, you, you need water nearby to put out anything, I agree completely with everything. The, um, running of a shooter site is absolutely perfect with me, I think that would bring money into the community and everything. The only problem I have with that would be, um, the unlimited license part. This is kind of a cutthroat business, um, people, we have united over the past several years, um, a lot of us have banned together and tried to make this community better, work, work together to make, uh, more jobs, more opportunities, bring more money into the community. Doing that would dilute the, uh, dilute the business and probably hurt it more than anything else. You're looking at basically the same ratio of people coming in with more businesses. It would basically just cut it down to each, um, bu- business, and it would probably hurt more than it would help. Um, other than that, I agree with everything about the amendment, but the, only the unlimited license part.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we're going to close the public hearing, and Commissioner Wickman, you were trying to say something, or did you have to leave? She left.
She's been gone for a while.
All right, Commissioner Eastly?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity. While generally I believe that the market will dictate the number of similar businesses it will support, uh, I disagree vehemently with the elimination of the permit cap in Section eight point oh four, point oh five oh. If purchasing and detonating unsafe and insane fireworks, uh, is illegal, why would we create more opportunities for unnecessary work for our emergency services workers? There are many areas of this county, uh, that would, where, where it would seem to me that new fireworks businesses would open up, uh, the way the legislation or the bill stands now, they'd be completely unregulated, there's no conditional use permit in process to, um, provide for the safe operation, um, and in terms of the, what are considered the Safe and Sane fireworks, I absolutely support, um, Brent Jones, Sheriff DeMayo, Mr. Koberger, and Chief Lewis in their comments, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hollis?
Yes, uh, one item that I, um, wanted to bring up is the unlimited license, I'm absolutely opposed to, uh, any more than the licensing that we have now. I believe if, uh, we open this up, it'll go back to the years where if the operator, operator can't make the money that he wants, he'll be selling the fireworks out the back door to juveniles. So, I, I, I don't want to go back in history and, and make more problems than, than we've got, I think that it's worked pretty well with the six licensing, and that's where I want to stay, thank you.
Commissioner Boraski?
Yeah, I have about ten pages marked, but I'm not going to go through all of that. I, my comment would be, uh, we do not have anything in on our ordinance about where, what kind of building these should be sold in or whatever, and if we're going to come back in and, uh, make changes, I think we need to, we need to do that. Other than that, there's, um, uh, a bunch of, um, type of glappable, uh, items in here and whatnot that need to be changed, and, um, on eight oh four, one two oh, materials not to be stored in there fireworks, um, it says one hundred feet, and I, I, if you're going to go and change the ordinance, I'd like to see that it be more like four or five hundred feet, unless it interferes with an existing, uh, uh, fireworks store that's here, and I don't think it does, and I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you. Uh, I'm, I'm going to be-
Mr. Chairman, Daryl Lacy still has some comments, if you, he's sitting at the speaker's table.
I was trying, I was trying to ignore him, no, I'm kidding, go ahead, Daryl, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is Daryl Lacy, L-A-C-Y. Uh, I had provided some comments to our former county manager on this issue a while back, and it seemed to have gotten dropped between the cracks, uh, primarily with my responsibilities in planning and building safety, I had discussed this issue with our professionals in those departments, and their main concerns were, I guess, about the temporary facilities as well, and that we'd like to make sure that any change to the ordinance would incorporate something that would require all storage and display of fireworks should be in permanent structures with appropriate fire suppression as required by building and fire codes adopted by I County. Uh, I think there is a risk of temporary trailers and tracks and tents if we don't make sure we put that in there specifically. One thing that was felt to be a possible, uh, benefit would be to require an annual fire inspection, uh, for a fee to be paid by the permit holder, and an issue that has come up in the past is that storage is currently being done in transport containers that, uh, are stacked one upon another with no space between them. There was a fire in one of these containers in Perump a couple of years ago.
And it backed right up to a subdivision.
Yes.
They were at the back of the property that they shared with the backyard of residences.
So if we allow containers, there should be at least some spacing requirements for fire protection purposes, so, that was our comment, thank you.
Thank you. I brought this forward because we have six or seven businesses here in town that we aren't allowed to, uh, use. I got a, a ton of information from communities all across the Southwest, a lot in Arizona, that are now allowing personal use again. Uh, I was in New Mexico, it was a high fire burn season, they banned aerial fireworks, but allowed Safe and Sane. Uh, New Mexico, uh, uh, where's the site, website?
Carlsbad, New Mexico.
Thank you, that's it, Carlsbad, desert community much like this, um, and, and, yeah, bottle rockets are part of aerials, uh, nothing that leaves the ground. Uh, in this, the personal use section, it states that you have to have, uh, fire extinguisher water within, within, I believe it's fifty feet. Notwithstanding the provisions of this chapter, I County residents eighteen years of age or older are permitted to discharge or detonate any retail purchased Safe and Sane fireworks as defined, defined in this section, on their own property, provided that they discharge of fireworks shall not occur prior to, and it's right around the Fourth of July time, and then it goes on to say, individuals discharging Safe and Sane fireworks under this section shall have a fire extinguisher or other fire suppressant within fifty feet, uh, of, of discharge. I thought that was safe enough, I grew up setting off fireworks, they're allowed now across the Southwest. Yes, we do have shooter sites, no one would step up and, and set up a shooter site. Uh, if, the pleasure of the board is that they, that if they agree that we're not too stupid to use fireworks and we can, uh, you know, allow it again, and they are opposed to the number of licenses, that's up to the board. My, my opposition to the, to the, to the limiting licenses is purely capitalist, purely my libertarian soul, which has let the system buck, um, was not my intent to open it up so anybody could come in and set up a, a thing, I thought we had that in place with planning, I thought that I was in, I thought I was told that, now I'm being told something else, so, um, it, that, that was my intent, and if the, if the board decides that, no, uh, we are not allowed as citizens to use a legal business here and use a legal product, then I would, uh, I would submit that, uh, it's a bit hypocritical because we allow them to be sold and taken to other communities, and if they're that-
I completely agree with that, and I have been saying that for the eleven years that I've been on the board. Why do we continue to grant permits if it's illegal to set them off in I County?
Thank you. And, and that, that's my basic, basic reasoning, uh, it's not to set the whole town on fire. There are more deaths due to Christmas tree fires than there are fireworks, maybe we should look at banning Christmas trees next. It just goes down to the same basic, government has to hold our hand and watch out for every little thing we do, and that was my whole intent in this, so now I will turn it over to the board so we can move forward.
I'm prepared to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to reject Bill Number twenty twelve dash oh two.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Eastly, uh, to reject, and seconded by Commissioner Boraski, further discussion. No further discussion, I would just like to say again, my comments still stand, we're going to be back in the same place, and I think that we are hypocrites. So I will call for the vote, Commissioner Eastly.
Commissioner Eastly votes aye.
Commissioner Hollis?
Commissioner Hollis votes aye.
Commissioner Boraski?
Commissioner Boraski votes aye.
And Commissioner Shinhoofen votes no. Uh, it fails three to one, we are still not allowed to use this product. Okay, we're going to take a break for lunch, we'll be back at one thirty, and we will get on with Item twenty-seven immediately, as Commissioner Hollis told me he has to leave. Thank you.
Have a safe trip. So much for conservatives. You do?
Yeah.
In order, I County Board of Commission for March sixth. Are you okay in there, Tonopah?
Yes, but we're not complete, we're-
We're good.
Okay, here we go. Uh, I've had a request to go to Item twenty-seven B, Commissioner Hollis is, now I'm yelling, so everybody else is yelling, I'm yelling. Um, Commissioner Hollis is on his way out of town, he's on the phone, he would like to hear Item twenty-seven B. So, uh, Daryl, if that's you, if you want to run with this, go ahead.
Mr. Commissioner, is Commissioner Hollis on the line?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, just, just one minute if you could wait, our recording is not working, it was bumped out, so, hold on for just about thirty seconds.
You guys planned this because I'm running the meeting?
The weather up here is unbelievable.
It's horrible here, the wind's so bad you can see two feet in front of your face, the dust is thick.
It's trying to snow really bad.
If it snowed here, it would knock down the dust. Well, once we get started, we'll do twenty-seven B and then eleven I. Sorry to jump around on you, but trying to make everybody happy.
Has Commissioner Hollis called in?
Yes, he's on the line.
I'm here.
So, uh, Sam, as soon as you're ready, say so, and Daryl, take it from twenty-seven B.
They had us wait for the recording. I know, three-minute time limit is up.
I'm going to have to go get a tape recorder, apparently the power has killed something, so, hold on.
Okay, just let us know when you're ready, thank you.
We've had power outages, power surges, power, everything.
We've had Power Rangers down here, thank you, that was good. Oh, the microwave's working, we're told. We got a picture of the Tonopah Chambers.
Oh, yes.
Vern is recording audio and visual here, so. DVD and hard drive, he says. It's up to, uh, the clerk, whatever the clerk says. And, so we're up on the website on Granicus now? Yeah, I know we were, but she wanted to wait for the recording. Whatever, I'm amiable. Just don't call me Amy. He hasn't so far. Should have. He's a small businessman, we're going to limit the amount of TV studios next. Sam, is this a ploy to wait for Joni, or?
Like the power button.
Sam, even with the microwave back up, you can't use your?
It's on.
Okay.
There you go. Fair is fair. Do these go anywhere, or do they go in the trash? After we're done, do they, do we throw them away? Okay, it's a good idea. I'm just going to say, Bush told me to do it. Yeah, that's job security, throwing paper airplanes around. That's what I think of your comment. Yes, I know I'm on the record. Hey, Bill, you didn't fill one out, would you fill it out so I can throw it?
We're on Granicus, too, so.
Not afraid, I'll tell you what I think. Everybody's entitled to their own opinion, no matter how wrong. Even me. Let's see if that one goes better. Oh yeah, that's better. We close, Sam?
Very close, just putting cassette tape in.
When I bring it back. All right, here we go. Item 27B. Already called us, I'll say it again, we're calling this meeting back to order. The Niq County Commissioners for March 6. Item 27B, Mr. Lacy, please.
Is Commissioner Hollis still here?
Yes.
Okay. Before we enter the discussion on it, Al Gary had just called and wants to make a change on the letter, on the subject line, he wants to change from the reference to the AULG and PADD, he wants to add the subject to be consent to host a repository at Yucca Mountain as the subject line. The Blue Ribbon Commission is something that we've had several discussions on in regards to the review of our nuclear waste process in the U.S., including potential impacts on Yucca Mountain. One of the primary recommendations of the Blue Ribbon Commission report is a recommendation to use a consent-based process to cite a repository. We have had several resolutions to support the continuance of the licensing process, and Niq County's discussion that we feel like with proper safety and mitigation of, and mitigation of impacts and appropriate benefits that Niq County would consent to host a repository at Yucca Mountain. And this letter is a letter to Secretary Steven Chu of the Department of Energy, basically stating that, consistent with the recommendations of the Blue Ribbon Commission, we would like to enter negotiations to start towards a consent for a repository at Yucca Mountain.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion approved by Commissioner Boraski. I'll take that as a second from Commissioner Hollis. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for the question, Commissioner Hollis.
Did you hear me?
Yes, we have the motion and a second. We're calling for the question. Commissioner Hollis.
Motion to approve.
We got that, just say yes or no. Mr. Hollis.
What are you talking about?
We have a motion and a second. We've called for the question, and I'm asking you yes or no.
Can I say it any clearer? What am I missing?
Okay, Commissioner Boraski.
Aye.
Are we?
Commissioner Eastly.
I apologize, Dan. We got served late, and we just walked in the door.
I'm sorry.
If you will tell me what item you're on.
We're on 27B. We have a motion by Commissioner Boraski, and a second by Commissioner Hollis to approve.
To approve?
Yes.
27, I'm sorry.
27B, nuclear waste. It's a letter to Secretary Chu.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'll support that letter.
Thank you. Commissioner Hollis. Okay, I got three confirmed ayes with mine. I don't know what to do, because I haven't, can't get him to say yes.
Are you still there, Joni?
Pardon me?
I just wonder if anybody's still there.
Yes, uh-huh, you bet.
I can only hear you. I can't hear Dan, but I can hear you real well.
Would you ask him then that we have a motion and a second, and we're waiting for him to say yes or no? Joni, could you, Ms. Commissioner Eastly?
You bet, I'd be, I'd be glad to. Gary?
Yes.
Do you vote in favor of the motion to approve?
I vote aye.
Okay, he votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
That's done, very good. Now we're going to 11, I'm sorry, I'm just, I figure he's yelling, I gotta yell.
I can hear you.
11I.
Yes.
The other one Commissioner Hollis would like to hear is 11I, and we might need translation from Tonopah for this, too.
I'd be happy to help.
11I is discussion deliberation on pursuing the transfer of ownership of the Belmont Courthouse for the Nevada Division of Parks to Niq County. Staff or whoever wants to take it.
Yeah, Gary, do you want to speak to this issue? We're on 27I now, it's the, I'm sorry, 11I, the Belmont Courthouse. This is your item.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Hollis, a second by Commissioner.
What are you laughing about?
Commissioner Boraski, any further discussion?
What's so funny?
Say again, Gary?
I said, what's so funny? I hear all this laughing.
We're just having trouble relaying information and being able to hear each other, that's all.
Okay, Joni, we've, this courthouse has been in a disarray for many years, and it's about time that the commissioners take this courthouse back and, and take care of it.
Yes, thank you, Gary.
Okay, so that's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, may I, just to, for a point of clarification?
Yes.
How are we going to move forward with this, Pam? Would you like me to help you draft a letter, or shall I initiate some conversation with the Park Service or Darrell? What do we want to do here?
Has there been any communication from the Park Service to us? Is there any?
Years ago, yes, years ago, when Question 1 was being passed, they had indicated to me at the time that they would be interested in turning the courthouse over to Niq County, and at that time, we didn't want to take it, but I assume that they're still interested in that.
All right, then we will generate communication with them, see what they want to do, and then do a resolution to move it forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That's further discussion, no further discussion, I have one point. We took back the, we took over the sidewalks in Tonopah a number of years ago, and that became a huge liability. I'm just concerned that, is this going to turn into a huge liability for us? Anybody want to speak to that?
I don't think we took over the sidewalks, Dan. I don't think we assumed responsibility for those. I think we stretch, if I'm not mistaken, we always had responsi, yeah, we always had them.
Oh, okay, what I understood was they were offered to us by NDOT. And Commissioner.
No, uh-uh. No, they were always ours.
All right, Commissioner Boraski.
Mr. Chairman, if we want to do anything with the Belmont Courthouse, we can go into a grant to cover that. It is a historical landmark, so there shouldn't be a problem getting funding.
Great, okay, call for the question.
And the other issue.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll just add very quickly. The other issue here is that we would be able to generate donations from individuals and organizations, which we're not really able to do right now because it's a, because it's a state-owned property.
Okay, great, let's call for the question, go with Commissioner Hollis. Ask Commissioner Hollis how he votes, please.
Gary, are you prepared to vote?
Yes.
Okay, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
He votes aye.
Commissioner Eastly?
Eastly votes aye.
Commissioner Boraski?
Commissioner Boraski votes aye.
Commissioner Shinofen votes aye, passes 4-0, with Commissioner Wickman is gone. All right, let's, Gary, could you ask if he's staying on the line for me? I'm sorry.
Gary, are you going to remain online?
Yes, I'd like to do the lobbying issue and Brent Jones's issue.
He would like to do the lobbying issue and Brent Jones's issues.
Great, okay, we can hear him, he can't hear us, I don't know, it's kind, okay, we'll go, somebody give me the number for the lobbying issue. Any, what's it? It's under nine, it's part of the consent?
23B.
No, I'm sorry.
Uh-uh.
23B?
Yes.
23B, okay, let's go to 23B. Who's bringing us forward, then? Who would like to speak on 23B?
Mr. Chairman, I will.
Go ahead, please.
We had three proposals, three responses to the RFP for the lobbying services. One was just, not disqualified, but not left in the running because of the pricing was so far beyond the other two. Of the other two, one dropped out, leaving Mark Fiorantino's proposal as the one that's on your, in your backup.
Okay.
I, staff reviewed the RF, the responses, and we felt that the, this service would be at the discretion of the board, and so staff's recommendation is that the board make the determination for an award, or determine the length of service, the, you know, if you want this for 12 months a year, or if you want it for any kind of less, lessened time than that, or how you want to structure an agreement.
Thank you. Any other board member wish to speak to this item?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My, my only concern with this was the scope of work. If the, is the, Pam, is the contract worth $60,000?
Yes.
That's a, that's an awful lot of money, and I would like to see a more specific and expanded scope of work for that amount of money. Is it for lobbying only during the four-month session? Is it, you know what I'm saying?
The proposal is for a 12-month duration, supporting the legislation when it's in session, bill draft request, writing, and, but basically, it's a, it's a 12-month, $5,000 per month agreement, is the way it was proposed.
Okay, the, it's the third bullet point in the specific duties. Attend meetings of the Board of County Commissioners as reasonably requested. Who gets to determine what the definition of reasonable is?
You would make that the next.
Okay.
We have Mr. Fiorantino here, I don't know, would you like to speak on this? Mr. Fiorantino's coming forward.
No, I don't need to talk to Mark. I trust Mark, I just want to, I, my question is to staff in terms of what they put in, in the bid for the scope of work.
Yes.
I, I think there's a lot of paper rustling or something in the room that you're in, and we, we can't hear.
Okay, I'm in the truck, I, I.
Oh, okay.
I'll quit.
Okay, thanks. The, Mr. Chairman, that, those were my only questions.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? My, my only concern is that we're, if we approve this, we approve it, I guess, starting now, and I, I would like us to wait till July to approve anything new, once we get to see what the whole budget is, and, and I don't see a need for these three months, although we do have to have our bill draft request in by September 1st, and I think we need to bring something forward from this board quickly on that, so we can get moving on it. But that's my only comment, so the pleasure of the board, anybody want to make a motion?
Dan, I agree with you about waiting until the beginning of the next fiscal year. I have no problem supporting a contract for a lobbyist during the legislative session. I would like to make a motion to approve it with an effective date of July 1st.
Second.
Pam?
Or, or if you're not, if you are concerned about, I would not make the decision, I would table it until July, when you have a chance to see the, the budget, and you know that what you, if you want to do an annual contract or a scaled-down contract.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm going to withdraw my motion on that, because I, I agree with Pam, and this would give us time to maybe refine the specific duties, although he bid on a specific set of duties that were in the technical specifications.
Yes, okay, we have a withdrawal by Commissioner Eastly, and I, I don't know, do we have to ask to have the second withdrawn, or not?
Yes.
Okay, the, are you withdrawing?
Yeah, I'll withdraw my second.
And Commissioner Boraski withdraws a second. You want to ask Commissioner Hollis if he has anything he wants to, does he want to make a motion, or do you, somebody want to make a motion to table this, or what are we going to do?
I don't, we don't, we don't need a motion to table, but I, but I would like to speak with Mr. Fiorantino. I don't think, I, I think that in theory, the board supports this, if, if he thinks there's going to be a problem for us to bring this back up in July, with the understanding that we're not going to rebid the contract, we don't have to rebid it, do we, Pam?
No.
Okay.
Ms. Fiorantino, she was just asking, started speaking to you on that.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
We've got video.
Go ahead.
I'm Mark Fiorantino, F-I-O-R-E-N-T-I-N-O, and I'm, Commissioner, would you repeat the question?
Oh, me, Mark?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Oh, I just wanted to make sure you understood that in theory, the board supports this, and if you have a problem with us bringing this back in July after the beginning of the next fiscal year for approval in some form, we are not going to rebid this contract. You are the only bidder, you are, you know, you are qualified, and you're certainly capable of handling this. We would bring it back at the beginning of the next fiscal year to determine how we're going to handle this, if it's going to be for a contracted amount on an annual basis or on a monthly basis, which would be completely dependent on how, what our beginning fund balance is and where the revenues are coming in. Can we talk to you in July?
Of course you can.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. All right, there's no acting on this item, then, and we will move, is that correct?
You'll make a note.
Do we need?
Yes, that's correct, and I just want to make sure with an instruction, hey, hang on, with an instruction to staff that you'll put this in some kind of a tickler file and bring it back the first agenda.
Well, we will discuss it when we're preparing the budget, because it'll be something we'll have to address at that time for inclusion in the budget, so that you can then award it for January 1.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We will go to Item 23A. Brent, if you'd come forward, please. 23A is for possible action discussion deliberation regarding bid 2012- 23A is for possible action, discussion, deliberation regarding bid 2012-3. That's enough said on that. And whoever's going to speak? We do have Brent Jones here.
Brent Jones, J-O-N-E-S, Director of Emergency Services. I would like to ask the Commissioner to support this bid that they, we put out. We would be getting two previously owned ambulances. One of them will have a brand-new cabin chassis, complete with a warranty. The other chassis will be approved by the Nye County Lead Mechanic, Brad Adams, and the fire truck that we are trading in--
23A.
Right. The fire truck that we're trading in, obviously is, it's much more valuable for us. Our ambulance service does probably 10 to 15 to 1 runs. We, this is a fire truck that we had taken out of service and that we would like to make sure that our volunteers are, are well-equipped. We've got problems with our ambulance fleet, even though you see a lot sitting around. I believe you saw in the backup documentation of our issues that we have, so I'll, I'll stop with that and then I'm sure some folks have some questions and we can go from there.
Commissioners?
Yeah, I do have a, I have a couple of questions. Brent, can you just give us a little history on why this engine was removed from GABs?
Yes, Commissioner, thank you for asking. The, when the big engines were purchased before my arrival, we put one in every station and it's a large type 1 engine that requires a special license, type B with a F classification to drive it, which requires specialized training. Also, they're very intimidating big engines that you have to operate frequently to remember exactly how to get it in the pump mode. The, the two engines that we have, we traded one in from Manhattan for the two small mini pumpers that we have put in, one in GABs and one in Manhattan, so that they don't have to have a specialized license to drive it. They can be more quick on their response and it's not an intimidating engine that would be very difficult to operate in the case of an emergency. So, when I consulted the county manager at that time, when I was, we were moving these things around, they felt that was good and then we brought it before the board about putting the mini pumpers in to GABs and to Manhattan and that was supported, obviously, by the board and it's really worked out well. And I know Manhattan had a great save with theirs not long ago, but that's why we moved it out, man.
Yeah, Belmont was pretty happy with that action also. I've, I've talked to their people. Were the GABs people okay with that action? I didn't hear anything from them, but I, I know the other two services were.
At the time, you know, Bob Bottoms was, is very happy with it in, in Manhattan and the entire group there's, the training on it has really been encouraging. Ray Dumore is the individual at the time we were dealing with in GABs and he was very supportive of it. What has brought up a little question as of late was the GABs Fire Department responded to Yamba probably about three weeks ago and our departments are designed to stay and protect the towns that they are in. They're not, that mini pumper's designed to stay in GABs, obviously. It doesn't carry a lot of water and they have hydrants and so they, obviously, when they went to Yamba, their concern was water and they have a four-by-four that they pulled a 500-gallon tank that we also have in GABs, but, you know, bottom line is, we need to stay in GABs and protect the town because if something were to have occurred, then we would have been in a, a very big bind. So, we don't have a mutual aid agreement with Yamba. The last time Yamba had a fire service, they drove the truck down the mountain and then walked home and so, you know, I do not believe, I think we are very adequately serviced in GABs. We have limited number of firefighters. We're going to do another entry-level class there and I know there's a couple that were concerned after that Yamba incident and even we called for some mutual aid from some of our own departments who refuse to leave their town because they know they can't, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Brent, did any other fire department in Nye County ask that they be allowed to use this vehicle because it does have a great capacity for carrying water?
Back long ago when we were building the front, the, the new station that I'm sure you're very proud of there in Tonopah, we repositioned one of these new engines in that Tonopah station. They have a new one.
Yep.
And at that time, we said, do you want this engine? We said, you know, having a matched pair wouldn't be a bad idea and at that time, they said, no. A few weeks, probably a month and a half ago, John Campbell came to my office and asked that they get the engine. We were well into this deal and I had gone into the statistics and the Tonopah Fire Department responds to about 15 fire incidents a year, which is 15 too many, but it's still, with the frontline pumper that's new that we put there and the response rig that they got the other day and the other tank, the other, they have a Freightliner, which is a great engine, we did not feel that negating this deal would be beneficial due to the condition of our ambulance fleet right now.
Okay. But John Campbell's not the fire chief though, right?
He was representing, according to John, and we both know John well, you much better than I, he was representing the department from my understanding that they had talked and asked about it.
Okay, all right. That's my questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. It's, any other, Commissioner Brasky?
Yes, I had a couple of questions. One of them was, don't, don't we have extra ambulances in Tonopah right now that are not in use?
They're broken. We have ambulances, but right in the backup documentation, we're working on getting them repaired all the time and that is our greatest concern, is that, you know, our oldest ambulance is like 17-years-old and then it goes from there, but the fact is, in the last 12 months, we've had many mechanical failures and have had to utilize the training ambulance as an active ambulance. We've had so many mechanical failures that for a 48-hour period, Smoky Valley had been left with only one vehicle and so currently, we have three vehicles down due to mechanical failure, leaving us one as a spare, so three of the four you see in Tonopah are mechanically down right now.
Okay, is that in the backup of the original agenda item or the other two that I've got since then?
Ah, it was a backup in this, the latest agenda item that you received, sir.
Because I didn't have a chance to look at that.
But--
Okay, I, I think that ends my, my questions.
All right. Thank you. Pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I did, I did, this is Pam. I do want to make sure everyone is aware that we did have an appraisal done on the, that fire engine and it was done by Brindley Mountain Fire Apparatus, James F. Wessel and he said that the value of the unit is $130,000. The arrangement that is being offered to you is an exchange at $120,000. So, I just want you to make sure that everyone understands that.
So, we would be losing $10,000 on the trade and, and trading what's essentially a brand-new piece of equipment for two used ambulances.
May I comment on that, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely.
Ah, yes. Anytime, I'm sure we all have bought new vehicles and traded vehicles in. A trade-in value is generally lesser, if you look at Kelley Blue Book, than what you would outright sell it. The document from the gentleman that conducted the appraisal said that he would purchase the, the engine for $130,000. When we trade a vehicle in, we're, we're dealing with a company that we've purchased five vehicles with. We're very excited about them winning this, but what we have gotten with the two ambulances would, would desperately need to be factored into this decision because I think that by him putting a brand-new 2012 cabin chassis under one of the vehicles, which has a full manufacturer's warranty, and by him agreeing to put a cabin chassis that, on it that, that Brad Adams would approve, a new ambulance itself would cost you $120,000 plus just for one. We're in a position here to get far more than that out of this trade-in value, so I think the bang for the buck far exceeds that $10,000 difference in the appraisal this, that this gentleman gave us.
Thank you. Again, go back to the board. Anybody want to make a motion? Is Gary still online?
Gary, are you online?
Yes.
Can you hear?
I can hear you.
Okay. I have a, Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Pam.
Please, go ahead.
If, if we got an appraisal of $140,000--
Thirty.
$130,000.
$130,000, I'm sorry. Why couldn't we sell them for $130,000 and put a little more money with it out of capital and buy two brand-new ambulances?
We could look at that option, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman--
I just have a, I have a--
I don't know how much an ambulance is.
Two brand-new ambulances would cost you approximately from $280,000 to $300,000.
All right.
My, I, I think it's a fine project. I would be very interested in hearing from the light-duty shop what the problem is with getting these ambulances on the road. I'd like to hear from them. I think that their input is important and I just have a fundamental problem with the way county finances are right now of trading a vehicle for less than the appraised value.
Thank you.
Yeah, Brian--
May I make one more comment?
Brian's got a--
Hold on. I'm sorry, go ahead. Commissioner Eastly?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Mr. Coonsy has indicated he wants to--
Okay. Let's go to Mr. Coonsy and then we'll come back to Mr. Jones.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There were a couple of issues that came up with this particular purchase that did, did raise some issues for me from a legal standpoint and one of the concerns I have is that, it's my understanding that, well, we're putting bids out on these type of equipment and it's not, it's my understanding that we are not using specialty-type of brokers or things of that nature, so I really have questions as to whether or not we got this notice out to the right people to be able to make a bid. And I also understand that, that we actually drove this truck, the tanker, to the person in Rancho Cucamonga to, to have them look at it and I don't think that happened with anybody else. And I, and so the thing is, if we're, all we're doing is putting this bid out on our website. We are not contacting people who specialize in this type of equipment and we only get one bid that we're dealing with on a one-on-one basis. I think it raises a lot of questions as to whether or not this truly is a legitimate bid process and that does cause, you know, some concerns. Because again, I think, I think we have an obligation to announce without to those groups that would likely bid on it. This isn't like a normal contractor's bid or things of that nature. This is very specialized equipment. There are very specialized people who deal with this equipment and I don't think we can hide behind the fact that, well, nobody bid on it if we're not taking the effort to try to get the information to the people who might bid on it. And I think when we look at the fact that, that there's someone who's willing to pay us $130,000 for the pump tanker, I, I just think that there's too many questions here that may be, you know, if we get $130,000 for the pump tanker, you know, then why don't we try to sell the tanker and then purchase whatever other type of equipment that we need? Because again, I think the other problem is when you do these, exchange, you know, the, the, the problem with doing what we're doing here, where we're trading in, we're doing a sale of county property and we're doing a purchase of county property. And so we have to comply on both ends of it from the standpoint of appraisals, making sure we're getting fair value back and again, this isn't just a question of we just put this out to bid and we take whatever we get. We have to make sure that we are getting fair value in return.
So, Mr. Coonsy, Brian, how does this, does this differ in any regard from surplus equipment sales, like what's done by Bob Jones sometimes?
Well, surplus equipment is an entirely different matter because you're basically, with surplus, you're basically saying it has no more useful life.
Oh, okay, that's the definition of surplus. Okay.
In this particular case, obviously, we can sell it for $130,000, there's a market for somebody to use it.
Yeah.
And it's obviously a useful piece of equipment. We just don't particularly need it. But again, I just think under these, under these circumstances, when we're talking about specialized equipment, I would like to see us do more in advertising it within that industry of people who might be able to come in and bid so that we're truly getting a good representation of, of what's out there.
Thank you.
So, your recommendation would be what on this, not to take any action?
My recommendation is that we do not take any action on this until we can resolve some of these questions that the circumstances seem to create.
Thank you, Mr. Coonsy. Mr. Jones, did you want to speak again? All right. And Commissioner Brasky wanted to speak. Go ahead, sir. Commissioner Brasky?
No, let Mr. Jones go ahead.
Oh, he's done.
He's done?
Yeah.
Well, considering all of the questions that have been raised today, be my motion not to take any action on this item until we can get those questions answered.
I don't think we even need a motion on that, do we, Brian?
You don't need, it, it can die for lack of emotion.
Okay.
I have a motion right now.
Well, that's true. I guess we should reject the bid.
Oh, okay. Because there is a bidder.
Yes.
Butch, Commissioner Brasky, did you hear Brian?
No, I, it's getting a little noisy up there.
Um, Brian said that what you'd want to do is make a motion to reject the bid because there is somebody who has bid on it.
Okay, then my motion would be to reject the bid.
Commissioner Eastly?
Yes.
I'll make the motion, we reject the bid.
Um, yeah. Do you want to second? Butch already has a motion on the floor, Gary, if you'd like to second Butch's motion.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, but I don't think Gary knew what my motion was, so you better explain that to him.
Yeah, he, he knows it was to reject, it was to reject the bid.
Okay. Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Brasky and a second by Commissioner Hollis. Further discussion. Hearing non-call for the question, Commissioner Eastly, would you ask? Commissioner Hollis?
Gary, how do you vote on the motion to reject the bid?
Aye.
Commissioner Eastly?
Commissioner Eastly votes aye.
Commissioner Brasky?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Shinova votes aye, 4-0 to reject the bid.
Tony?
Thank you. She walk, I can't hear you.
Brent, could you get these questions answered and let me know when you're at that point?
Yeah, I'm, I just had to step off the dais just for a second.
Can we do 23C?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess.
Could we go to the item on the training center next?
Yes, that's where we're going, Gary. Oh, wait, what, where are we going, Dan?
Yeah, we can go to the training center since Brent--
We have 23C as well.
Yeah, tw, I'm sorry, we have 23C also, which is part of this. I can say anything I want about Gary, he can't hear me, but I'll refrain myself. Let's go to 23C because that's the same thing with him and then we will go to the training center. So, to item 23C, if you would pass that on to Gary for me, please.
Gary, we're on item 23C. That's the pickup truck response vehicle.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Brent Jones, Director of Emergency Services. I'd just like to address a question to Mr. Coonsy. Is it your recommendation we pull this item as well so we don't waste the board's time on this, this item?
Yeah, I think, Brent, I think it is the exact same issue.
Can we just, do we have to reject the bid on this too then or what?
We would have to because there's bond money tied up in these vehicles on their bids.
Yeah. I, I guess, Mr. Chairman, if I--
Yes.
I just have one question. It wasn't clear in the backup, which community is this vehicle intended for?
This vehicle will be here in Pomp. The vehicle that it's replacing will go to replace a Carl Mitchell animal control truck. It tells you how old that truck is.
Oh, yeah. My gosh, that's a blast from the past. So, the, this pickup truck will be exclusively for the use of the animal control officer then?
The, the one that it's replacing, the other truck will be used by myself.
Oh, so the new truck would be for you. Wait a minute, I'm, I got myself all backwards here.
Right. My current--
So, we would be--
My current response vehicle has 70,000 miles on it. We have old, like I say, a Carl Mitchell-era animal control standby truck. Mitchell-era animal control standby truck. We would be replacing that truck with this truck so that we can have a good replacement vehicle, because our animal control fleet's getting aged.
Tony?
Hang on, Gary, hang on. I'm sorry, Brent.
And then the new response truck, which would have even some animal control capabilities on it as well, and fuel storage would be in the emergency services with myself.
So we're...we would be trading in a fire truck?
No, a pickup truck.
For a Dodge Ram...yeah, for a Dodge Ram pickup, and...okay, I got it. All right. Gary, go ahead.
I gotta...I'm gonna have to leave you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Gary.
Yeah, tell them thanks. Oh, you did. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
We're falling like dominoes here.
Yeah, we got three left. I'm about to leave myself, so. Go ahead. Pleasure of the board.
Well, I think I'll make a motion to reject the bid.
Second.
And then Brian will bring this back again.
I have a motion to reject the bid by Commissioner Eastly, second by Commissioner Baraski. Commissioner Baraski, how do you vote? Further discussion, hearing none. Commissioner Baraski?
I vote aye.
Aye. Commissioner Eastly?
Eastly votes aye.
And I'm aye. That's three, nothing. It's rejected. Let's go to 21A then, since we were here, and Mr. Jones is here, and let him go back to work. We'll get this one. Twenty...21A, I'm sorry. 21A. And is this...Brent, go ahead, please.
This is just some paperwork that we've been...the district attorney has been putting together for us for our multipurpose training facility, and maybe Mr. Coonsy could expand on that, and if there's any...I know it's been on before, and this is the second time. So I just, obviously, would like to have the paperwork approved to move forward, but I would ask Mr. Coonsy how that's looking.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Coonsy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just quickly on this, I think when it initially came up, there was discussions about having a release that people who were coming and using the training facility would sign, holding Nite County harmless if they were injured on our property. The second part of the agreement was basically from the entity in which they would indemnify us if they came in and, you know, their truck ran over one of our buildings or took out our fence or something of that nature, that they would pay us back. So I was concerned about the fact that this was all put together in one agreement, and it called into question really the procedures that needed to be followed. And so what we've done, if you look at the material that was with the backup, what I'm recommending...
There is no backup.
It was with the previous...I mean, it was backup with the previous. The agreements were with the previous agenda item.
Oh, okay.
Where the two agreements were basically put into one. What I'm recommending is that you adopt the agreements, but we separate them, and I have them separated out into two separate documents. What needs to happen, and the procedure I'd like to see the board adopt, is that before an entity comes in and uses our facility, they complete the entity form in which they are going to hold...or they're going to indemnify Nite County. They're going to provide proof of insurance and take care of all of those items, which is my understanding would be done through the administration, county administration office, instead of basically on the site of when the training is going to take place. And then the secondary procedure then is when the people come on, we use the part of the form that then has the individuals require that the individual sign a hold harmless of Nite County for those participants who are actually doing the training on that particular day.
Very good.
Hopefully, that's clear enough there.
It is clear. My only hesitancy is that I haven't seen either one of those two documents. I know you said they were in a...
They were the exact same documents. I just broke them into two, just two separate ones.
Okay.
So it was what was previously submitted to the board during the last agenda item that we pulled because of my concerns. So again, there's no change in those documents other than the fact that I've just made them two instead of one.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead.
Brent, you've had an opportunity to review those, and are you okay with them?
You know, my biggest question, obviously, is like when the United States Army and Navy and the city of Las Vegas, Metro, those types of things, we ourselves have never had to provide proof of insurance when we trained with these individuals. And I was just, you know, if we're going to get this done, we need to...I just think it'll be interesting to see how that progresses, but I'm not aware of that, how it works. But, you know, this will be an educational process for me as well, getting that from the federal government.
Pam or Brent, are you anticipating at any point in the future charging a user fee, or are we...I have no problem with just letting this people come in and train here. I think certainly that's the purpose of it. But was there any thought given to charging a fee? And Brent, you can answer that if you want to.
Yes, 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 ma'am. We do anticipate using, charging private entities a fee and, you know, when they want to come in and use their facility. There's a lot of different mining aspects that want to come in and use it for their rope rescue teams. There's just a lot of possibilities that are open with that type of facility, so there would be a user fee involved. I think we can generate revenue not only for the county, but for the town as well.
Okay, thanks.
Brent, isn't it your intent to recover operating...replacement of operating supplies as these people use the facilities?
Definitely, ma'am. Even the public entities will be replacing us for the disposables such as liquid smoke, any type of plywood, straw, things of that nature that they might use during their exercise. And we would have someone on-site monitoring that, and then they would sign and agree to it, and then we'd bill them for it.
I think that's a good idea. Okay, thanks, Brent.
Thank you. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion approved by Commissioner Eastly, second by Commissioner Baraski. Further discussion, hearing none. Commissioner Eastly?
Votes aye.
Commissioner Baraski?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Shinofen votes aye. Passes three-zero. I do have something real quick on this same topic. We're going to have a training session up there. When is that? On the eighth?
March 15.
March 15. So will this all be in place by then?
It's...
Okay. And if not, let me know so we can do something with the board and get it approved. Thank you. All right, that was 20's. Now, let's go all the way back to the beginning of this document. I mean, this agenda, to all the things we passed. I'd like to get rid of the consent agenda. I mean, go through the consent agenda right now, and then on to...back to our 10-15 timed items. We're just a little late on those today. So let's go with the nine...item nine, consent agenda. Anybody need to pull anything?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to...I'd like to pull item O. I have several concerns about that contract that I would like to discuss.
Okay, good. I did, too. I'm glad you're going to bring it up. Okay, Commissioner Baraski, anything you would like to pull?
No.
Uh, Ms. Webster, anything that you want to talk about on this?
Yes, I would like to pull nine, aye, for a little bit of clarification.
Okay. So we're going to pull nine, aye, and we're going to pull nine, oh, so we're looking for a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda items nine B through H and J through N.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Eastly, a second by Commissioner Baraski. Further discussion, hearing none. Call for the question. Commissioner Eastly?
Aye.
Commissioner Baraski?
Aye.
Commissioner Shinofen votes aye. Passes three-zero. Let's go to letter aye. And I believe Ms. Webster?
Yes, the only thing I would like to clarify is that the agenda item reads that the labor to do the work on these cars, including the paint, you know, repainting and applying the graphics, will be done by the maintenance shop. And it will be done by the maintenance shop, but there will be a fee that's involved with it. So what I'm...what we're asking for here is $20,000, a budget of $20,000, and we'll get as many cars as we can for that completed. But there will be a labor cost that is not reflected here.
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion approved by Commissioner Eastly.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baraski. Further discussion, hearing none.
Thank you for the clarification, Pam.
Thank you. Commissioner Eastly, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Aye, Commissioner Baraski's aye, and I vote aye. Passes three-zero. Thank you.
I don't know if we need to keep doing that, because we've got complete coverage.
Oh, we can see us now, so maybe we just call for the question. Everybody shout, and we're good. Okay, you're right. Thank you. We can actually see and hear. Oh, oh, Commissioner Eastly? Oh.
Yes.
Oh.
Oh, oh, oh. I get it. I thought you were making an exclamation.
I was, I get it. No, I don't know what I was doing. Go ahead, please.
Um, Brian, I'm gonna...I'm gonna ask you to maybe tag-team with me on this. I do have some concerns, and I will tell you what they are, and maybe you can put them in better language than I'm bound to present them in. Mr. Chairman, I specifically had problems with sections 1.2 and 1.6 of this contract. The state reserves the right to exercise an emergency amendment of the contract to recoup costs from the county under NRS 439-200. And then additionally, the state reserves the right to recoup costs, and this is in 1.6, under NRS 439-200. But when I reviewed NRS 439-200, there's no specific language in that statute that provides for recouping any costs on this contract. Additionally, I had problems in...with the state asking that we adhere to a budget that includes $519 for training. I would assume that anybody that they send out to do work in Nite County in this regard would be fully trained and licensed. I also have a problem with paying $716 worth of indirect costs when they don't explain what the indirect costs are. And then my final question to Mr. Coonsy is, I thought that we were under a forced assessment from the state to pay for these very services, and why is this coming up in a contract? And how do these two issues dovetail, or do they...thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
That's my comments.
Yeah, Commissioner...Mr. Coonsy, do you have any comment on that, or is that enough? Is there anything to say?
Well, just to kind of fill in a lot of what Commissioner Eastly talked about, and she's absolutely right. I did confirm with Pam that this amount is the assessment that we were charged for these particular services. And of course, this...we got hit with about eight or nine assessments, I think.
Yes.
And this is one that really is probably not legally challengeable with the way it's written. But this is one of those legislatively imposed assessments. So Commissioner Eastly is absolutely correct. We have an obligation to pay whatever the assessment is. Quite frankly, without...I don't intend to pull any punches here. I mean, this contract is, quite frankly, is deceitful from the standpoint of what they're trying to write into the contract.
Thank you.
To force us to...basically, under the assessment, we have to pay the assessment. So whatever the assessment is, that's what we have to pay. They then offer us an inter-local agreement, like they're being, you know, helpful to us, where we are then agreeing to assume the responsibility that if they go over their costs, they could recoup it through some emergency type of power.
Right.
And as Commissioner Eastly indicated, the statute that they're referring to gives them the right to form regulations with regards to all of the powers under this particular code provision. So it does not give them the power to recoup these costs. I don't know where they're getting that from. And so the whole thing is, you know, I can't strongly enough encourage the board to absolutely reject this contract. And I think what we need to do is contact the state and find out why they think it's necessary for there to be an inter-local agreement when we are already paying this assessment. We've already made a couple of quarterly payments on this assessment. There's no need for this inter-local agreement. And I certainly don't think the commissioners want to put themselves in a position where you could be assuming further responsibilities. And I do think that it's interesting, all the assessments that we've gotten, they've come in letter form, and in none of those assessments have they really broken down the assessment. And it's kind of shocking that they've done this.
I know.
They've done this contract where now they're letting us peek underneath the curtain to see how they came about it. And one of the things that's really disturbing is the fact that they have this, what is it, 8.9% factor or something?
8.6% division cost allocation.
Yeah, for their overhead.
Yeah, they want us to pay...they want us to pay $7,500 for cost recovery, purchasing assessments, and their division cost allocation, which they're going to have to do anyway. I mean, that...those are all inherent responsibilities of that health and human services function. Why should we pay?
Yeah, and the other thing is there's a transportation cost in here, but yet also one of the charges is we're paying for the motor pool car that the health inspector is using.
Right.
Plus fuel.
Well, and it included in that $3,100 is out-of-state travel. If they're providing the service to us in county, why do we have to pay them for out-of-state travel? I have a lot of very serious concerns with. And I'll take this opportunity for, as they call it, a teachable moment with my colleagues. I'm sorry the whole board isn't here. But I cannot...I'm going to be off this board in less than a year, and I cannot caution you strongly enough when a document like this, when an inter-local agreement or a contract comes from you...comes to you from the state or any other entity, if it references a Nevada revised statute, please go online and double back, read that statute, and see how it applies to whatever the contract is that's in front of you. That was my first red flag on this when I looked at the provisions for that statute. And there are four provisions, and none of them address the state being given the authority to enact an emergency...to exercise an emergency amendment of this contract. Nowhere in there does it say that. So, thank you, Mr. Coonsy.
Thank you, Commissioner Eastly. I knew you would have read those NRSs. And Commissioner Baraski would like to speak.
Yeah, I've only got one comment, and that's an unfunded mandate, and I don't want any part of it, so.
Well, I assume that that's a motion then, sir?
Yep.
Motion to reject. I'll second that.
Motion to reject by Commissioner Baraski, seconded by Commissioner Eastly. Further discussion. I have a brief statement. I read this and thought, it stinks. So all in favor, say aye.
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 No opposed, rejected. Three-zero.
Passes three-zero.
Just for some guidance, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to send a letter back to the state and say that we...this was rejected and the reasons why, and ask them for explanation?
I would be happy if that went on.
Okay.
Yeah, here's...here's an observation about that. It's getting pretty crowded under that rug, isn't it?
Yeah.
All right, let's go. Let's go to the...finally, to the 10-15 and then 10-30 timed items. We're going to go to the 10-15 items. We're going to recess to the Nite County Board of Road Commissioners and turn it over to Commissioner Shinofen. Thank you, Commissioner Shinofen. I'd like to open this meeting of the Nite County Road Commission.
Roses are red, violets are blue. I'm schizophrenic, and so am I.
Oh, my. That's correct. I knew somebody would catch. Here we go. 10-15 timed item. Let's do the 10-15 item, which is for public hearings. So we're going to open the public hearing on these RS 2477 roads. Anybody want to speak on them? Anybody in Tonopah? Nobody down here?
No.
All right. Motion from the board.
You have to close the public hearing.
I'll close the public hearing now.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Eastly, second by Commissioner Baraski. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? None. Passes three-zero. Now to number one, approval of the minutes for February 7th. Anybody have any corrections?
Some moved.
Some moved.
Second.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Eastly, second by Commissioner Baraski. It's going to have to be that way, one or the other, because that's all we have left. Further discussion, call for the question. All in favor? Aye.
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 Passes three-zero. Next, general public comment on the road commission. Anybody up there?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Nobody here. General Road, report now, number three. Go to number three.
Dave is approached...oh, well, we're not on teleconference anymore. Here's Dave.
No, we get to see him now, too. And we have Tim down here in case there's a tag-team going on.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I...
Afternoon.
The only...yeah, good afternoon. I apologize. The only thing that I need to report that's actually transpired up here in Tonopah today is actually, obviously, Stretch has been taking care of some road signage that's been blown off with the high winds.
On my street.
Yeah, probably so. And we are also dealing with snow as we speak up there on Ione, on the actual summit.
On the summit? A lot?
So those are actually the two new things that we actually have.
Five inches? Five inches on the summit. Wow.
So it's coming across and should clear up. But that's currently what I have. Add to the current report.
Great. Commissioners, anybody want to talk, ask?
I have no questions.
Yes, Dave, I have a question regarding Comstock Park. Did you...did you talk to the gal over there about what they wanted to do and try to come up with some sort of price that you could bring to the board to take care of that?
I could not attend that meeting that day, as I had other meetings. But I did send a representative of Public Works and went over there and met with them. And this is actually something that is a wish list for the Comstock Trailer Park. I am actually in the process of putting a maintenance schedule together. The roads that are actually...what they're asking for is something that they could have done when they were an actual park ownership, that they actually received monies from, their own HOA, if you will. Within that, they chose not to. And what we are going to do is actually come back with an actual maintenance agreement and actually do current maintenance within the park. They want pretty much a majority... want pretty much the majority of the roads repaved and widened out throughout that entire park. And right now, that is something that we are not actually going to address at this time. And I do plan on actually putting that together, letting the Comstock Trailer Park owners know that. But we are not going to neglect the actual current road with potholes in them. We do have some drainage issues that we're going to address, and a couple of signage issues as well. So, those we are going to take care of under the maintenance program.
Dave, thank you for that information.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other further questions? Nobody else is here. All right, let's go. Thank you, Dave. Reports good for me, as always. And you've answered everything I need. Let's go to number discussion deliberation, set a date, time, location for public hearing on Nye County Road Commission resolutions listed below.
Some moved.
Well.
No, no, no. Staff is recommending setting a date, time, and location of April 3rd at 10:15 a.m. in Tonopah.
Sorry, sorry.
That's my motion.
That's her motion?
Yep.
Seconded by Commissioner?
That's my motion, and I'm sticking to it.
Okay, then stick to it. Motion by Commissioner Eastley, second by Commissioner Boraski for discussion. Hearing none. Call for the question. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Aye, okay. Three nothing, I think. Motion to adjourn, I mean, number five, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait a minute.
Some moved.
Okay. We didn't do Commissioner Management comment yet.
No, we're on the road commission agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Road commission. And you got a motion to adjourn, and we're adjourned. We're going to hand it back to Commissioner Shinhofen, and then, thank you, and we're going to go back to recess now to the Licensed Liquor Board.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to open this board, Nye County Licensed Liquor Board, for Tuesday, March 6, 2012. Item one, possible action, approval of minutes in Nye County Licensed Liquor Board, February 7, 2012.
Motion to approve.
There wasn't much, there wasn't much to them, was there?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes three zero. Sheriff's not around, right, to do any voting? Okay. General public comment, three-minute time limit per person, and requested. To be limited, items not listed on the agenda, no action will be taken by the board. Any general public comment in Tonopah?
There sure isn't, thank you.
Okay, Beatty, for Rump. Hearing no, general public comment. We'll close that. Consent agenda.
Motion to approve. The staff recommend.
Oh, second, sorry.
Three A, B, and C?
Yes, A, B, and C.
And I, I just have a, I have just an observation. There's nobody here from the sheriff's office, so how are we going to sign those 72-hour permits, Lorena? I mean, we can approve them, but there is no permits up here. There's nobody from the sheriff's office.
I will ask Kelly where there is.
Okay, all right, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes three zero. And there's nothing for anything else, so item seven.
Motion adjourned.
Pam.
Motion adjourned, and we are adjourned.
Great. Okay, now let's go back to, if, skip the Commissioner Manager's comments for now, we'll get them at the end, towards the end. I'd like to go through the other items that we have on this agenda. If it's okay with the DA, can we, can we do your session last?
He's not here.
Okay, well, then, I'm going to go to G. 11G.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just realized, there are six members on the Licensed Liquor Board.
Oh, we don't have a quorum, that's right.
We never had a quorum.
Lorena, that's a great catch.
Why don't you tell us?
Yeah, but is that a quorum?
Liz brought it up. Liz, Liz, you're the bomb, thank you.
Is, is that a?
That's a good catch.
Yeah, I don't know.
You can't grant those licenses.
Yeah, we cannot. But the ordinance allows the chairman of liquor licensing to approve 72-hour permits outside the meeting.
Yes.
So, that's not going to be an issue. So, Butch can sign them down there, or?
But I think we're on three of whoever's present. Okay. So, three is not a quorum, then, on a six-member board?
No, not on a six-member board, it's not.
So, you can't even hold the meeting?
No.
I, there may be language in that ordinance that says a majority of the members present, but I'll double-check that.
No, it's that, that would not be consistent with the open meeting law, Butch.
Do we just pretend it didn't happen, or do we need to go back and do anything, but it never happened? Is that?
Somebody give Lizzie a gold star.
We have to disclose this, what we have to do.
Okay. Let's go to 11G, if there's nothing else we have to do with that. 11G for possible action, discussion deliberation, proposed letter in support of H.R. 4019 Federal Forest County Revenue Schools Jobs Act.
Dan, I feel like you're dragging us with the rope behind you while you're driving your pickup truck at 80 miles an hour, but motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion, second. Motion by Commissioner Eastley, second by Commissioner Boraski. Further discussion, hearing none. Call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to try to speed it up some more.
Damn. I need a valium or something.
It's that hour that I spent listening to the figures and numbers guy that just is, I'm still trying to catch that hour up.
You kind of rushed him through that, too. We only do that once.
I tried.
I know you did.
All right. That passed, right? Thank you. H. Discussion deliberation, possible decision concerning a request to purchase a membership for Western County Alliance. This was Commissioner Wickman's item. I don't know if anybody else wants to speak to it, or if we should just trail this till the next meeting.
No, I'm prepared to speak on this. I spoke to Commissioner Wickman about it before the meeting. She just, she just placed this on the agenda as a courtesy because she had a request to do that from Ken Brown. It has always been the position of this board that we are dues-paying members and are represented in the Western Interstate Alliance, and we also have representation on the Nevada, or the National Association of Counties Public Lands Committee. We have always, it's always been our position in the past that we are adequately represented, and that it would not be in our best interests to pay the fee to belong to an association that duplicates the work of two other organizations.
Right.
So, my recommendation would be no action on this item.
No objections. Moving on. All right, let's go to 12. We have no action on that. This is tough. I had comments on this, but I'm going to go ahead and let the board move ahead with this. 12A.
What did you have comments on, Dan?
On who's picked, I'm sorry, not this, yeah, on who's picked for this board. I've had some phone calls.
Oh, 12A, oh, oh, oh.
12A, but go ahead. I'm just going to let it go and let one of you two speak.
Mr. Chairman, we specifically instructed or delegated the authority to staff to do interviews and backgrounds and make recommendations to this board and staff on appointments. And staff is recommending to appoint Carlton McCaslin and Janice Painter to the two open positions, and that is my motion to follow staff's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Eastley, second by Commissioner Boraski. Further discussion. This is where I would say it. I had a lot of calls from people who were on the library board, they're concerned that the current, every time a new position comes up, it seems that, seems to them that the person running the board is picking who's on her board. And that concerned them, and that's why the other lady who wasn't picked was on. And I would have liked to spoke in favor of Ms. Long, but I'm ready to call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three zero.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment about your statement. And for the reason that, one of the reasons that we delegated this responsibility to staff was for the very reason you said. We don't, we don't, in most cases, know these folks. We're basing opinions sometimes on who we get the most telephone calls on, and many times, it's not even that. It's just a dartboard issue. So.
Sometimes we don't have enough people. I'm sorry.
Yeah, sometimes you're right. You're absolutely right. So, I'm more than willing to follow staff's recommendation in this regard. They did their homework.
Thank you, and that passed three zero. And is the DA back in the room?
Yes, he is.
Okay. Mr. Coonsy, do we need to break before we hear your items, or can we have your break at the end of this meeting?
We can, we can do the break at the end of the meeting.
Great, then let's just go to 13A.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Eastley, second by Commissioner Boraski. Further discussion. This thing says that there is no fault. This is just a settlement. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I have one other question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
There are some specific items in the terms of agreement that need to be followed up on. Is the district attorney's office going to do that?
Actually, that's done through our Pool Pact Attorney.
Through the Pool Pact, okay, thank you.
Very good. Okay, no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Passes three zero. 13B.
Motion to approve.
Actually, I probably need to discuss this, because there's nothing in the backup on, just to clarify, there is no agreement on this one to be signed. What it is, is the plaintiff in this particular action is going to, has agreed to release all claims against all the defendants. And the Nye County is agreeing to pay $225,000 through Pool Pact on this matter.
The backup says 250.
The total is 250. Nye County's saying 225.
All right, motion by Commissioner Eastley.
I thought the, I thought the deductible was 50.
It is. Another defendant is contributing to the 250.
I hope it's the defendant. I think it is.
Total settlement is 250. Nye County's share through Pool Pact is 225.
Thank you.
And you, you made a motion to approve?
My motion stands.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Boraski. Motion by Commissioner Eastley, second by Commissioner Boraski. Further discussion, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Let's see, we did emergency services, facilities. 22A for possible action, discussion deliberation, approved change order number two, the contract with PacVAN. Is Mr. Jones around? Does he want to speak on this?
I don't, I think that, I think that the language in the backup is sufficient. At our meeting on February 25th, we approved an item in which it was recommended that this change order come forward. So, this is just more or less a housekeeping issue. I'll move to approve.
I'll second, but I have a comment.
Okay, second, motion by Commissioner Eastley, second by Commissioner Boraski. Further discussion. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm hoping sometime in the future, we'll be able to get a, something bid out and with one price and not have to go back and keep adding to it.
I used to be idealistic when I first came into office, too, Butch.
Well, I think if we're persistent enough, we'll make that happen.
Maybe if we all keep saying it, somebody will hear us.
At a minimum, the entire project should be laid out, priced.
Yeah.
And designated who is doing the work.
Absolutely.
Exactly.
And you're going to make sure that happens, aren't you?
In that format going forward, yes.
And that's, and that was his question, and then he said, call for the question, and we call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And there's no one else here? There's only the three of us. 27A.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Eastley, second by Commissioner Boraski. For discussion, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. We did B, so we're going to skip down to C. Discussion deliberation, possible, regarded possible proposal for the Rump History Video Project. Is Daryl still there or not?
Yeah, he is, but I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
To approve this and to instruct staff to move forward with an agreement to bring back to the board at a future meeting. And Commissioner Shinhofen, I appreciate you bringing this forward for consideration. It looks like it'll be a very interesting project. Good job.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Eastley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Boraski. Further discussion, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Passes three zero, and we will get a contract back, hopefully at the next meeting.
Yes.
Let's go right down the line, 30A. 30A possible. Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second? Motion to approve by Commissioner Eastley, second by Commissioner Boraski. Further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
You got, you got tangled in that rope that's being, you got tangled in the rope behind Commissioner Shinhofen's.
I tried to read the item, she jumped forward with the motion. Go ahead.
I would like to just add one thing.
No, call for the question.
Good lord.
Oh, go ahead, please, please.
We would like to put a one-year limit on this. I neglected to do that when we wrote the contract up. Just put a one-year limit on it, so it's reconsidered at the end of a year.
Mr. Chairman, I'll amend my motion to include that language.
I'll amend my second.
I have an amended motion, amendment, amended second. And further discussion?
Yeah, I've got one comment, and I believe we're going to get feedback on this.
Oh, yeah.
Because this is a Public Works item, and it's a former Public Works person, but I do support Oz and what he's, what he can bring to the county. Okay?
Thank you. And I also would like to say something. I understand what you're saying there, but I think he has institutional knowledge that can't be duplicated and, again, I sup-
We're only paying, sorry.
I support, well, we're not paying him enough to do it, I know. Is that what you're going to say?
No, 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 I was going to say, no. I was going to say, we're paying him a heck of a lot less under the contract than we were when he was doing it for us full-time.
Well, yeah, there is that. So, we got that going for us. So, that's, that was my comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nobody. Okay, now, before we get to the last two, which is general public comment and announcements, and then I got to look and see what I missed.
No, we need Commissioner Manager's comments. I've got some things.
That's the other thing I was, I was just saying, I want to do that. I want to do the Commissioner comments, and I want to look to make sure I didn't miss anything. So, we'll start with you, Commissioner Eastley. Commissioner Management comments, number eight, please.
Okay.
Carry it.
Is everybody ready?
Yeah.
I'm going to be outside. Let me know when you're done.
Pam, I would like a standing agenda item. I don't know if it's necessary every meeting, but at a minimum of once a month, for audit issues that have been identified as material internal control problems, I would like a report from you at a minimum of once a month on what our progress is to correct those material internal control problems.
Here, here.
Second. We are on the verge of boom here in central Nye County. And I'm seeing people who are either want to move in mobile homes, or they're moving them in pretty rapidly. And I, I need you to follow up on, unless you have an answer, or Daryl does right off the top of his head, what the county needs to do in terms of permitting. I understand that the law has changed, and I have not seen anything come before this board about the county's, a change in the county's policy about hooking up mobile homes. Because we're getting people who are being denied utility hookups because we're not following the state law. So, if you could look into that, unless you know anything about it.
The mobile homes are regulated by the State Department of Manufactured Housing.
Yeah.
This issue has come up in the last few months. I was more aware of it in, like, around Mountain, where I had a few complaints about it, where manufactured housing was supporting this out of either Reno or Vegas. And very difficult to schedule a visit from them, as well as charging mileage when they do come to this part of the state. So, I've had a discussion with the Director of the State Program, and we were looking at possible alternatives. The other piece of that is, once manufactured housing has stamped and approved the mobile home itself, and the foundation for that mobile home, the county has delegated authority under the building codes from the state fire marshal that we're supposed to approve the electrical connection and the plumbing connections.
Yeah.
So, that's the piece that probably is waiting before the electrical company will hook up the.
Well, it's TPU also, because Tonopah Public Utilities is refusing to give them water service. I've gotten some complaints about that.
This is something that, when we change the agreement with Charles Abbott Associates, we have, seeing this coming, we had actually changed the contract, allow them to work throughout the county. We just haven't put in place a funding mechanism to address that, so.
I think we need to do- I think we need to do something.
I thought we were denied the ability to do the, the inspections ourselves.
Well, there's two pieces of inspections. One is actually inspecting the mobile home installation to make sure that if it's a double-wire, they're connected properly, and that put a stamp on the side of the door for manufactured housing. Landry County, I believe, already has the delegated authority from the state manufactured housing to do that themselves as part of their building program, and that is one possible alternative in the future, is for us to take over that with delegated authority. But once a mobile home is mounted, then you have a connection to the sewer and a connection to the electrical.
Yeah.
And that's the piece that I think is...
That they're being denied on, yeah.
... easily is said as being denied of.
The new, the new piece of this? I mean, I don't know, I don't know what this new piece is, this new law or new regulation.
It's not a new law. It's just now the NV Energy or TPU...
Yeah.
Are realizing that they are liable for a problem if...
Okay. Oh, okay.
They hook somebody up and it hasn't been inspected properly. So there's potential liability issues there, I think. I don't know that there's a new law, but there could be something new that's triggering this as well, I have not aware of.
So does this apply, would this apply to the county as well? Because I know on our training, in our training facility down south, we moved mobile homes in there, and I think one or two of them were pre-HUD. Do we have to get the approval of manufactured housing on those also?
Those that have a manufactured housing stamp in them. However, those were installed with, those do not have sewer or electric connections right now.
Oh, okay. All right, that's probably the difference.
They're being used as training props, not as occupied structures, and we're having to address how we might change that if we wanna use them for occupied structures in the future.
Well, doesn't matter if there's no utility hookups, we're fine. Yeah. Okay. That's it. Thank you. I have one other question. Pam, I thought of this when we were talking earlier about the training facility and the use agreements. They were granted a temporary certificate of occupancy over a year ago. Do we have a full certificate of occupancy on that?
I thought they got a conditional use permit, because it's not occupied, we're not occupying it, we're just, we're, we have approval to use the facility for outside training.
Okay.
Mr. Daryl Ays again. Those are training props, and they have full approval and site development plan approvals and all for that...
Okay.
... activity. If we want to use those, and Mr. Jones would like to potentially use some of those for training in the future, and we may have to address our ordinance on that to allow them to be used from a...
But we can allow...
Classroom training, which would be inside, you know, and that would, that would require a...
Certificate of occupancy. So we, the temporary is fine now, or the temporary wasn't even necessary because they're not occupied?
That's correct. What they're using them for is training props. They have full approval from planning on their site development plan and the whole works.
So why would we even, why would it even be necessary to issue a temporary C of O if...
Those are nice buildings. They've been assembled and are a good opportunity when they are doing a fire training type of activity, that they might wanna do some classroom training to coordinate with that, in which case they would be changing the use of the building and need to get something that would allow them to...
But they're being used for training right now. I thought...
Outside only.
Well, as training props.
No, but they're not, they're not...
But they're going inside the building. That's what I'm, that's what I mean.
But they're not occupying. They're, they're going through for, for exercises. What he wants to do is sit down and use it as, I mean, put furniture in it and all that stuff.
I don't know if I agree with that.
You're telling me that people going inside of a, a trailer to do a fire exercise is not using it? If that's, if that's the line we're drawing in the sand, then we've got some serious problems, because it is being used if people are going in. It doesn't have to be used for, for classrooms in order to be used. It is being occupied. It is being used if they're going in, because that, that was my understanding, is they're going in it to do scenarios. They are using the building, and to say that we are letting people go in there without a properly inspected building, and we're, and we're trying to draw this distinction that it's a, it's a training prop, really causes me a lot of concern that I think we need to address. But unfortunately, this is really, we need to put this on the agenda items, because I think, I think we're getting far away from...
My, my only, yeah, my only question was the temporary C of O, and that, that was it.
I think maybe this is something we need to put on the agenda to flush out, because again, I think we won't be on the Commissioner comments.
Mr. Chairman, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you. And I had those same questions about those things, and I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Boraski.
Thank you. Couple, I got about three things here, four. Pam, have you forwarded the letters to the California Energy Commission and the resolution from the last meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. I made the board aware at the last meeting that the governor's trying to merge workforce connections and Dieter, and, and I still don't know if I, I would personally wanna support that, but I'll bring something in front of the board in the future. I do have a meeting, Leo's meeting Thursday, and we're gonna be discussing some of that, and I'll bring the board up to speed on it at our next meeting. Rump Valley High School Cheerleaders took the state championship, so I will be trying to put together some, some awards for those gals in our next Rump meeting. And I also will be attending the emergency preparedness get-together in Fallon in April, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pam, do you have anything?
No.
It is Commissioner Manager's comments, so... No? You sure?
Oh, I'm sorry. I do have something.
Oh.
We will, we will have a special meeting on Monday, March 9th.
Washing my hair, can't make it.
Can't even count to Monday. March 12th, to consider an agriculture well for the Calvada I.
I am not gonna be available. I, I might be able to call in, but I'm leaving for Reno at 7:00 that morning, so I should be hitting Hawthorne around then, and if I have a signal, I'll...
This will be at 9:00.
At 9:00?
Right. Not 8:30.
I might not be available.
Okay.
Just, I know where the cell signals. Two hours out, I won't have, probably won't have a signal.
Should we make it 9:30?
Quit laughing at me, Kuntzey. You know exactly what I'm talking about. Yeah, but it goes in and out. A half an hour out. Two hours out, it's gone.
Well, wanna make a different time?
As long as you have a quorum, you've got one item, you're fine.
Okay.
I'll walk through hell to be there on time.
Thank you.
That's it for you?
I'm finito.
Okay. All right. Bucklin, you ready? I'm gonna bring forward a, a bill to limit the number of bars in town, and I'd like mine to be one of the... Sorry. Never mind, she's like, what?
All my hair fell out when you said that.
Well, we have a limit on fireworks, Dan, so I thought we should limit bars, but... Yeah, they're gone. Anyway. I, I, both of the things that Commissioner Eastley brought up, I, I agree with. I, I'd like us to stay on top of these accounting things, and the idea, we did approach the state once with the, for us to be able to inspect the mobile homes, and I'd like to